Are you all ready?
Yeah.
It's nice we got a bit of an echo. Welcome to you all, welcome to everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, October 25th, 2021, and you're here at the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted to have you with us this evening. If I could, I'd like to ask that you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to your public who each stands one nation under God and whose vote liberty and justice for.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley, here. Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Here.
Ms. Shans Hiscott.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And we don't have to read any announcements or notices today. We've got everyone here in person, so.
Correct.
All right. I think it's the first time in a good while we haven't done a hybrid meeting notice. Anyway, again, welcome to everyone. Before we get started, I'd like to ask if there's a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
I'm sorry, I moved to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. So before we get to the substance of tonight's meeting, we do have a couple proclamations, or at least one, and I'm going to turn that over to my colleague, Mr. Littenhouse, who's got a special interest in urban agriculture, and ask that he please do the honors. Ross?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Whereas since colonial times, agriculture has been an important part of the Commonwealth's economy, with early colonists and their families working on the land to raise food for themselves and their livestock. And whereas although the city, the Commonwealth and the nation have become increasingly suburban and urban, agriculture continues to play an important role in Virginia's economy and in Falls Church, with farmers' markets, community gardens, and other urban agriculture, education, and awareness programs. And whereas the increasing challenges of hunger and obesity show the need for a more coordinated approach for growing, distributing, and accessing healthy food. And whereas urban agriculture helps strengthen sustainable community food systems, both locally and regionally, enhances education and learning, and bolsters food security while providing entrepreneurs with new opportunities. And whereas the Virginia Cooperative Extension has reported that if every family in Virginia spent $10 a week on fresh, local food and farm-based Virginia products, more than $1.65 billion in economic impact would be generated to strengthen more localized food production. And whereas the General Assembly designated October as Urban Agriculture Month in Virginia to provide the opportunity to promote and educate Virginians about the benefit and importance of urban agriculture programs to local communities.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Urban Agriculture Month in the City of Falls Church, to promote and educate residents about the benefits and importance of urban agriculture programs in our community.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who's affiliated with this proclamation or who'd like to receive it? Okay, well, we'll just keep this for our whole community then. And Ross, special thanks for bringing this up this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I just want to put an emphasis on the importance of urban agriculture in our communities to give our children educational opportunities. It's been quite some time, I think, since many of our kids have gotten to feel what dirt feels like, and it's important for our children in our community to understand supply, food chain, and educational opportunities in our green space around the city, I think, is critically important to that growth mindset that we talk about quite often in our school system. So very, very pleased to have been able to read this proclamation tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And so our other proclamation is going to be put off for another week or two, and now we're on to oaths of office. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here tonight to receive their oaths of office?
Yes, I believe we have two board members. Mr. Rollo, Joseph Rollo, is the first one?
All right.
Stand, stand right there, be fine.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yes. And so raise your right hand. Do you, Joseph Rollo, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the City Employee Review Board according to the best of your ability, so help you, God?
I will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful, thanks.
And then we have Mr. John Ward. Do you, John Ward, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Environmental Sustainability Council according to the best of your ability, so help you, God?
I do.
Thank you, and thus.
Would you, before you head on out, would both of you all like to come up for a picture? Maybe a congratulations to Council or thanks of Council for working here in our community? Would you both like to come on up?
You didn't know you were in for this, did you? Just go up in the middle, up there in front of them, that would be great.
Stand next to Phil.
All right, now we're on to public comment. Madam Clerk, we'll start with written comment, and I'm going to ask you to go ahead and read the folks who are here in person. Let's start with written comment, summary of written comments.
We sure will. Trying to do this without glasses, as we all know, we're getting used to these masks and quite foggy. Let's see, we had some comments on the draft climate change plan. Vipas provided some extensive comments on that plan. John Wilson commented and asked that the impact of small lawn equipment be considered in the plan. The library board wrote in support of the charter amendment to remove the qualified voter requirement. Regarding an equity commission, Rachel Clark of 68 Laura Drive wrote in support of creation of a city race and equity commission. Angela and Vi Wong of 710 Poplar Drive wrote in support of the creation of a city race and equity commission as a forum to discuss racist behaviors and the impact they have on the community. We had several comments on the Founder's Row II proposed project. Bethany and Dan Henderson provided extensive comments particularly regarding transportation issues. Spencer Newman of Ellison Street opposes the project as it is submitted, and he would prefer a non-residential development. Danny Polinsky of 201 Patterson Street asked Council to pause on moving forward with the project to make sure the right project for the city goes at that location. Donald Vafides of 206 Patterson Street opposes Founder's Row II as planned because the density of the project only benefits the developer, not the city. The Vipas also provided extensive comments on the Founder's Row II project and said it needed a lot of work to be a benefit to the city. We got comments on One City Center proposed project. Nader Baruk of 243 Gundry Drive wrote to say that the One City Center application was not ready to move forward because of the lack of commitment to what will be on the ground floor, which he believes would be the main community benefit. He said the deed for the 202 West Broad parcel should not be changed unless all the key issues with the project were addressed. And he expressed concern about traffic, residential density, adequate green space, and the structured parking. Bernadette Baruk of 243 Gundry Drive wrote with concerns about One City Center's planned traffic circle and the size and nature of the planned green space. Dee Ellison of 298 Gundry Drive asked that the One City Center project be revised to address massing, density, and traffic issues. Andrew Olison asked that during consideration of One City Center that the proposed safe bicycling infrastructure at South Maple Avenue and Annandale Road at the roundabout be extended to the next significant intersections in all directions. The Winter Hill Community Association Board of Directors provided comments on the project and expressed concern about environmental impacts and on existing infrastructures, massing and height of the project, traffic, green space, impact on Big Chimney's Park, and undefined ground floor spaces, as well as the cumulative adverse impacts of large-scale development on the city. In other comments, Matt Adams of 200 North Maple Avenue supports a plastic bag tax. David Beto of 444 West Broad Street asked for a study about adding speed and red light cameras on Broad Street. Todd Friedlander of 801 Hillwood Avenue asked about the continued presence of boarded-up storefront at Founder's Row. Christina Goodwin asked that a gym be added to one of the proposed developments. Marcia Hertzberg of 444 West Broad Street urged Council to make allowances for permanent outdoor dining at local restaurants. Kate Nesson of 302 North Virginia Avenue requested that any budget surplus be used to restore city departmental budgets, retroactively reinstate a 3% staff raise that was foregone in 2020, and that it be used to fill all open staff positions. The Mary Riley Stiles Public Library Foundation asked that when Council considers proffers from developers, they ensure that they include funds that specifically benefit the library. And those were our written comments.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Let's move on to the receipt of public comment for those folks who are in the audience this evening. Would you go ahead and do the honors, Madam Clerk?
Yes. First, we have Kate Singleton. Sure, sure. How about Debbie Massey?
And just a reminder, if you'd be so kind, as to state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you, welcome.
Oh, okay.
And your time's up, thank you.
Now you can hear me? That was easier than I thought it would be. Honorable members of the Falls Church City Council, thank you. I'm a member of the Falls Church Social Justice Committee. So before I begin, I'd like to ask the other members here from the Social Justice Committee and our partner organizations, the League of Women Voters, Citizens for a Better City, Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation, who came to support me and our other speakers, if they would stand up and just, we can show our support as a group. Thank you very much. And if there is anybody out there who can raise their hand, that would be great, too. I have been a resident of Falls Church City for 15 years, and I really appreciate the outstanding school system, the many services, and the quality of life that Falls Church offers. I also recognize the efforts of the Council to uphold very high standards in these areas. To make sure that every resident of Falls Church has an equal opportunity to access and benefit from such excellent services, I think the time is right, and now, to turn a special focus onto racial equity in all aspects of city life. I know that Falls Church's boards and commissions have already reviewed their specific functions and have noted ways that they can improve equity. This is a very important step, but it is not enough to ensure an ongoing focus on issues of equity. In June, the Falls Church Social Justice Committee, supported by the Tinner Hill Heritage Foundation, the League of Women Voters, and Citizens for a Better City, sent a letter to the Council to recommend the creation of a race and equity commission, and I'm here tonight in person to reinforce and repeat that proposal. Such a commission could not only assist other boards and commissions in implementing their ideas for improvement, but also ensure a continuing accountable body to focus on equity across the board, to make new recommendations to foster inclusion, diversity, and equity, and to track progress. Arlington County and Fairfax County have recently put in place racial equity offices with paid staff to work on these issues full-time, and a funded equity position would be my first choice for Falls Church as well, because it is that important. But right now, the Council can take a leap in that direction by establishing a border commission with equity as its single priority. I urge you to take the deliberate, intentional, strategic step of establishing a race and equity commission, a step that would reflect the political will of this Council. And political will, along with dollars, is absolutely essential to translating words into meaningful action and to delivering real opportunity, inclusiveness, diversity, and justice in Falls Church. All residents will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Kate Singleton.
What is it that I need to say before I start?
Just your name and address would be great, thank you.
Yeah, Kate Singleton is my name. My address is 2636 Laura Drive. My street is about 9/10ths Falls Church City, but I'm a county person. Good evening, I'm a member of the Social Justice Committee of Falls Church, and I'm here to speak in support of Councilmember Hardy's recommendation for a race and equity commission for the city. I've chosen to speak tonight for many reasons. I have had a medical disability for 10 years, for which I have experienced discrimination and barriers. My husband is an immigrant, and I share with my teen daughter's permission that she is BIPOC, LGBTQ, and an immigrant who has faced bullying and discrimination in local public spaces when not around her parents' protective whiteness. Having worked for 20 years with immigrants and refugees in adult ESOL education and healthcare, I thought I knew a lot about the discrimination and barriers my students and clients faced. But after getting sick, I spent long stretches of time needing a wheelchair or walker to get around. That experience taught me much more of what it's like to be marginalized, unseen, unheard, and infantilized, all things that BIPOC people report experiencing regularly. I wondered, what if I had been a wheelchair-bound person of a different race? The level of discrimination and barriers to access I experienced would have been much higher. I realized that, though I had thought I knew, I still had much to learn about the struggles of disabled, BIPOC, LGBTQ, immigrant, and other marginalized populations. Young people have so much wisdom to share with adults on social and racial justice. I learn all the time from my teenage daughter. We have frequent conversations about the importance of centering voices of marginalized people. She reminds me how important it is that the people historically most negatively affected by public actions and policies get to take center stage in public discussion and be given the mic to tell their stories and determine paths forward for social change. The kind of work that we as a society need to do on race and equity is like these kitchen table conversations. Ongoing, vulnerable, honest, and persevering, with the willingness to say our knowledge fell short of where we thought we were. George Floyd's murder inspired me to join the Social Justice Committee, just like it motivated the City Council to undertake a social equity and police use of force review. Thank you for taking these deeply important steps. Now, locally and nationally, we need to move forward from a moment of passionate, inspired activism that arose from that tragedy to an accountable future, a future where racial equity is institutionalized and funded. This community deserves a race and equity commission, with BIPOC and other marginalized members anchored by a paid leading member with a strong track record in race and equity work. It will keep the city accountable for carrying out the changes that came up in the reviews. It will center the city's BIPOC voices and make an equity lens an important part of framing policy rather than a reaction to tragedy or harm done. This commission will center the right of all city residents to have equitable access to the resources and opportunities the city offers, and will serve as a bridge to racial equity efforts in Arlington and Fairfax Counties. The city can become part of a strong region-wide collaboration to make real, sustainable changes happen. Council members, I ask you to please step into your power and leadership on race and equity to build a better future for all residents. Please begin serious discussions to create a race and equity commission for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is?
We have Hal Lipman.
All right.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hal Lipman, 505 East Columbia Street. Greetings, everybody. I have really nothing to add beyond these statements that so eloquently describe the basis for everybody being here and for what we're supporting. So I hope you will consider and act on the idea of a race and equity commission, and this is said on behalf of the CBC Executive Committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
We have Allison Brown.
We have Allison Brown, followed by Kiana Collins.
I'm Allison Brown, 706 Poplar Drive. I'm president of League of Women Voters Falls Church, and I'm here on behalf of the League. The League fully supports establishment of a Race and Equity Commission. The city of Falls Church has taken a number of positive steps in the last year to further equity in our community. The city of Falls Church established the Use of Force Commission. You viewed the budget discussions last year with an equity lens and made some important changes. And each of the boards and commissions have looked at some of their issues with a race and equity lens. But these issues really need long-term commitment and a long-term investment. And one of the best ways to make sure that the community and that city council and that the boards and commissions stay focused on the important work of furthering equity in our community is to establish a commission that has that key focus and sole priority. So we encourage you to establish a Race and Equity Commission to do the long-term work that's needed to promote equity in our community. Thanks.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
And Kiana Collins?
Okay, so I'm Kiana Collins, and I live at 403 Share Avenue, Falls Church. My name is Kiana Collins, and I am here today as a resident of Falls Church, student at Meridian High School, and representative on the Social Justice Committee to voice my support for the proposal for the formation of a Race and Equity Commission. I care deeply about the issues that this town faces, not only as a resident, but as a person of color, a member of the marginalized. I certainly cannot speak for all minority youth here today in Falls Church, but I have an opportunity now to share this perspective with you all and help you understand why it is so important for Falls Church to care more deeply about issues of race. I want to first recognize the outstanding work this council has made in terms of racial justice. After George Floyd's murder last summer, I'm aware of the work that has been done with social equity review and progress of police reform. However, although this is a step in the right direction, I still believe there's more to be done. A big issue that concerns me and my family greatly is the lack of BIPOC representation and leadership in Falls Church. One of the main goals of this proposed Race and Equity Commission is the inclusion of diverse views and perspectives, incorporation of minority voices in the issues that affect us. As a minority in this community, I often feel unheard. If racial justice initiatives are not looked at through the lens of those who they affect, and if marginalized perspectives are not considered, how can I expect this to change? As a student at a predominantly white school here in Falls Church, I feel firsthand the effects of how it feels to not be represented, how hate can brew from a lack of diversity. For example, the recent racist incident at Meridian High School was especially revealing, and the lack of adequate administration response was disheartening. Racist and abusive language was used against a black student in a place where they should feel safe and respected, where we all should. The repercussions against instigators were minimal, provoking a student walkout against racism last week. Therefore, I have seen what happens when school administration discards the feelings of the minority. The same should not happen on a larger scale in our city. Change will only come if there is more attention paid to issues of race if equity is properly addressed. A Race and Equity Commission can strengthen Falls Church by providing a BIPOC perspective to policymaking, advising the city council, and continuing to foster our city's dedication to inclusion and diversity. Diversity is a beautiful thing, and I would take pride in knowing that it is a valued aspect of our community. Through this initiative, I hope to see racial justice more centered and prioritized by the city, providing a voice to the marginalized here in Falls Church, and continuing to improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Jean Gresko next, followed by John Ward.
Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens. My name is Jean Gresko, and I've been a resident of 120 North Fairfax Street in Falls Church for 21 years. Over the summer, I asked when the council would meet again in person. I'm pleased that now you are all back in these chambers and adding to the rapport of our little city. Not to take anything away from the city operations during COVID, owing to the ingenuity of the council, the commissions, and especially the city staff. Over the last year, the city has made great progress despite having to work around the pandemic. Among these recent accomplishments are the new high school and library openings, plus the progress on numerous mixed-use projects that include significant affordable housing. And nearest to my heart was the reduction of the property tax. I look forward to the council working additional tax reductions in the months ahead. With ARPA funds benefiting the numerator and Founders Row units expanding the denominator, I'm sure the council can find ways to reduce the taxes even more. Thank you for your time, and welcome back.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out in person. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have John Ward, followed by Tom Gittens.
Good evening. I'm John Ward of 335 Riley Street. I'm a member of the Environmental Sustainability Council and chair of its Energy Transition Subcommittee. I'd like to take this opportunity to make council and the public aware that two electric vehicle fast chargers are newly operational and publicly accessible at the South Gate Village Shops over on East Fairfax Street. That's the building that has Bake Shop, Preservation Biscuit Company, Panjia Restaurant, and others. The chargers are right behind Bake Shop. These are paid chargers installed by a company called EV Go, which operates the country's largest public network of fast chargers. I'd like to recognize the Young Group for taking the initiative to help negotiate with EV Go to allow them to put these chargers at this site, which I understand is under a long-term lease from the Episcopal Church. So we're very appreciative of everyone who worked to make this installation possible. I know Young Group, the Young Group has made sustainable technologies a feature at most of their developments, including ground-source heat pumps and a solar energy canopy at railroad cottages. And so far, they have the city's only certified lead gold building, the Flower Building on West Broad. So now, within city boundaries, this now adds to the two EV Go fast chargers that exist at Eden Center, as well as the eight free plugs here at City Hall, and two new free plugs over at Giant Food that are federal realty installed at their Birch and Broad Shopping Center. I'd like to take this opportunity to encourage all commercial property owners and their merchants to consider following these examples to help draw customers to their site and help accelerate electric vehicle ownership in Northern Virginia. Finally, I'd also point them to Dominion Energy's Smart Charger Infrastructure Program, or SCIP. If a site has at least 10 employees, Dominion offers very substantial rebates on charger installation, not just the chargers, but also including conduit, breaker panels, and metering. They can just search of Dominion Energy and SCIP. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your time and your leadership on this issue. Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly, do you have a question?
Yeah, John, thanks for that. Also, don't forget that there are about 10 chargers at the high school in the parking lot of Meridian High School. So add them to your list.
And I see Mr. Gittens is ready. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Carter, Vice Mayor Connolly, city council members. My name is Tom, Tom Gittens, and I live at 153 West Annandale Road in the Winter Hill neighborhood. I don't agree with the board. I am also a business owner here in the city of Falls Church. And my request is simple, that you require the developer to the existing businesses throughout the construction of the One City Center project, just like Insight is doing for Broad in Washington. Plain and simple, make it the same. Provide the small businesses the necessity that they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
That is all we have this evening, unless somebody else has a speaker form.
All right, so let's keep going then. Let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? Vice Mayor, or Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. A request following up on some of the public comments we got. So first of all, to the Social Justice Committee and the CBC and League of Women Voters and everyone else who came out. Thank you. I don't think I could have put it any better than you all have. I think this is an idea that's been raised before. And so, given that, it sounds like we have wide community support. I want to make sure that we elevate the topic of racial inequity. Similarly, how we have boards and commissions around things that we value in the city. We value the environment, we value history, we value economic development, the library, transportation, and we have boards around each of those things. I think it's time that we have something similar for race and equity. So I would ask that we find time in our upcoming agenda to work through this and potentially stand one up. So thank you again for coming out. Moving on to my other requests. Mr. Shields, I have three items around pedestrians' safety. I think there was a request from the neighbors on Dorchester and Great Falls around the visibility issue in crossing over to Lincoln Park and the bus stop there. I think it's not in the public right of way, so I wanted to understand what authority we have to kind of get the homeowner or whoever owns that land to trim their bushes to make it safer for pedestrians there.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The city zoning office is in touch with the property owner to let them be aware that the hedges are infringing in the site distance triangle for that intersection, and so we expect results soon. Usually, that prompts a very quick response. And so I hope that will be the case here, and I will report back to the neighbors on the status.
Great, thank you. The second item is, we had heard from the school board around kind of safe walking around the secondary campus. And I know that staff was looking into kind of improvements, especially in advance of more construction happening when West Falls breaks ground next year. Do you have an update on that?
The update is that both the city and the development team are looking at options and specifically looking at, moving forward, the planned construction of a signalized crossing across Haycock Road. So that is something we are studying right now, and it's being worked through the Infrastructure Committee that meets on a every-other-week basis.
Okay. And then my third, pet safety one, is around the new intersection at Park and West. I know it's still on blinking red. And so I've gotten some concerns on how that intersection's going to work. When we'll turn it back to full movement one, as well as interactions with the WOD crossing that's right nearby. Can you give us an update on that?
Well, I'm...
Mr. Shields, we're not hearing you very well. Maybe could you pull the microphone closer or make sure it's on?
Sure, yeah, thank you. So I will touch base with engineering. The plan had been to have that signal activated about two weeks ago, and we're still on the blinking red. I will talk with engineering about the current schedule for moving that back to get those signals activated.
Okay. I think as it rains harder, it's going to be harder here, everybody. I did one final thing. When I was looking at the schedule, I know we had committed to doing quarterly updates on the Use of Force Committee, and I think my note said that we last discussed in June. So I think we're due for one in the third quarter. So if we could plan for that, that would be great.
Okay, we'll get that scheduled.
That's it for now, thank you.
All right. Other, Ms. Hiscott?
Thank you. I too wanted to thank everybody for coming out. I am in full support of Race and Equity Commission, and I'm looking forward to hearing from staff how we can go about making that happen. I too think it's pretty critical to move forward the way we want to in our little city. There was a question. One of the public comments was on red light cameras, and I just wanted to get an update on where we are with that. I feel like we budgeted something and we were discussing it. Can you remind me of where we are?
Sure. So the city council did fund a part-time position, a retiree position, to help us review the summonses that come out of photo read, as well as speed cameras in school zones. That's a program that we don't have in the city, but we're aware that we have the ability to do that now due to legal laws passed by the General Assembly. But it is a staffing issue. We had hired an individual to do that, and currently, that individual has had to take a leave of absence. And so we're kind of back at square one in terms of having that staff to be able to move that initiative forward. So I will keep council apprised of our progress in that. I understand that it is something the council is very interested in.
Okay, and on the, do we have a new date for the electric school bus demo? No?
No, we haven't received that yet.
Okay. And, John, maybe you will want to, maybe I'll ask you to restate this better than I about our conversations on the data we've seen on traffic within Falls Church City. There is a discussion about how it's regionalized, and we're allocated a certain, what we're contributing, our contribution to pollution. And several people have said, well, most of the traffic passes through Falls Church City, so maybe we weren't really contributing that much to it. And John, you know, safely pointed out that, in fact, it is regionalized, and we are, where we might have traffic passing through, we also have traffic leaving Falls Church City and going out and creating it in other jurisdictions. So it is appropriately regionalized. And I wanted, yes, I wanted to make sure the council is informed of that or thought about in that lens. John, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that or submit additional information to that. And I'm interested in looking at the electric school bus because it ties into the same concept of decreasing our emissions and greenhouse gas emissions in Falls Church City. And then lastly, on public comment, there were questions about the vinyl covering on Founders Row 1, where we have just plywood up right now. I know there have been some back and forth. Do we have any update on when that might be more attractive for the foreseeable future?
Well, the businesses, the future tenants will actually be doing the tenant fit-outs. It includes the exterior finishes for the ground floor. And so that's why they are in the current status that they are. The Mill Creek has agreed to put a better finish than the plywood there, so I'll get an update as to when that will be installed. We do have an EDC meeting this Thursday, and we'll get a report at that EDC meeting on the status of agreements reached between Mill Creek and future tenants for the Founders Row 1 project.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, are there other comments? Mr. Snyder? And then we may have, do we have one additional public comment that I would like to sneak in?
We do.
All right. Mr. Snyder? What's that?
Why don't you go ahead with the public comments?
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Jodi Acosta. Can you please state your name and address? And you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for squeezing me in. I'm Jodi Acosta. I live at 101 Poplar Drive, and I also happen to be the city treasurer. First, I'd like to say kudos to our team of city government leadership and our school division's leadership for the amazing job they did during the pandemic. Under city manager Wyatt Shields' leadership on the city side and superintendent Noonan's on the school side, we not only wound up with a budget surplus, but we opened a brand-new, state-of-the-art high school and our newly renovated Mary Riley Stiles Library in the middle of a global pandemic. That's truly a great achievement and should be celebrated. None of these things, however, could have happened without the heroic efforts of our employees, who saw across the board departmental operating budget cuts instituted during FY21, endured a hiring freeze for over 20 vacant positions, and had their budgeted raises cut from the budget. The cuts were necessary as we faced the uncertainty of what would happen to our revenues during the pandemic. But now we see that, doing part to the budget cuts, pay freezes, et cetera, we've wound up with a surplus. It was mentioned last week in the council meeting that perhaps we should give the taxpayers a rebate with the surplus. But before we do that, I would like to request that we look at reinstating the pay raises that were cut in FY21 and restoring the departmental operating budgets. They were cut 10% across the board, and prior to that, city government budgets had been held flat since 2013. I know a bonus for employees has been mentioned, using the ARPA money. And while a bonus would certainly be nice, it is frankly not enough. I have spoken with many other department heads who feel the same. Many feel the pay raises should be reinstated using the surplus, not the ARPA funds. ARPA funds can still be used to reward those employees who showed up for work every day in person throughout the pandemic. There's been much talk about the staffing shortages as well. The city currently has 35 vacancies, according to our CFO, if I understood her correctly. We have experienced a loss of talent to surrounding localities as employees leave for higher-paying jobs where they don't have to do the work of two or even three people. This is what I'm hearing, that people are leaving for better pay with a lighter workload, so they can have a better work-life, home-work-life balance. And employee morale is at an all-time low. So how do we begin to address some of these issues? By taking care of the employees that got us through this global pandemic, who tightened their belts and took on extra work and did more with less. I respectfully request that city council reinstate the employee raises from last year before looking at any type of tax rebate. I would also like to request that we look at restoring the department's operating budgets. I say this not only as a city employee, but as a homeowner and taxpayer as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, Mr. Snyder?
Yes. So first of all, all those who came in support of the Equity and Social Justice Commission, thank you so much. Each of you represents hundreds of hours of service to the community and your organizations, thousands of hours. So it's much appreciated, and I look forward to working on that project, to launching that. And how we define success is something that I'm particularly interested in your advice on as we work on this. And I want to thank Councilmember Hardy for her work on this, and I look forward to working with her on establishing such a committee or commission. Secondly, I wanted to address the employee circumstances. Last Monday night, without warning, the city manager mentioned the number of vacancies. And so I think we're all interested in determining what is the cent, which of those... And so I think we're all interested in determining what is a sent, which of those vacancies are essential, and what more we can do to adequately compensate and create the kind of working conditions that will attract and retain highest-quality employees. So that definitely has our attention, and I've asked, and I understand the city manager will be making some remarks on that in his presentation. Next, on Metro. Last Thursday night at the Womata Committee of NVTC, I specifically requested not just that the current issues with Metro be analyzed and prevented in the future, but that Metro's entire risk management system needs a serious overhaul. So I'm hoping we'll be able to get some action on that because I share the issues that many of our citizens region-wide have that. Next, there was a comment made about greenhouse gases and transportation and region, and I thank Councilmember Hiscott for raising that. In fact, this is being addressed with a new interim plan to meet the very aggressive greenhouse gas reductions in the region, so it is being looked at, not only at a local level here in the city of Falls Church, but regionally. Next, there have been some comments requesting additional red light cameras and speed cameras. Regrettably, the state legislature has made it extremely difficult to establish and maintain both of those, and I hope we'll use our maximum authority and that we address it legislatively to give us a greater opportunity to address this important safety concern of our citizens. And finally, I totally support the comments made about preserving existing businesses and any new development. We found out with the insight development that we can do it, and we should do it in the future and all future developments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Other comments from anyone? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, can we work on adjusting the volume here in chambers? I'm having a difficult time hearing folks. I don't know if anybody else is, and I can see some folks straining to hear in the back there as well. I'm happy to tinker with it myself, but I don't want to end up like an Aerosmith concert. Yeah.
I think this is our first rainy meeting in the new council chambers also, so this is a new experience. It's good to be back.
All right, let's get that squared away. Ms. Hardy has another comment.
Sorry, I had two more requests. I saw that we're not having our scheduling meeting this week, so I have two more schedule items. Mr. Shields, we had talked about inviting Kettler to come in so we can stay on them about the status of the fields. Do we have that scheduled yet?
I will touch base with housing staff to get that scheduled or confirm that it is scheduled.
Terrific. And this big rainstorm reminded me that we have a discussion coming up on November 15th to talk about public utilities and stormwater, and in particular, besides standing up that commission, Ms. McCosker, I think in the past I've raised interest in adopting a similar ordinance as what Arlington did to require residential redevelopment to be more stringent in capturing stormwater. Is it possible to have that same discussion when we talk about that public utilities commission?
Yes, we can. I think there's some work to be done in terms of-
I can't hear you.
Yes, we can. I think there's some work to be done in terms of studies before the city will be able to do that, but we can certainly have that discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what that work is and get that started. Thank you. That's it now.
All right. If there are no additional council requests, let's move on to the report of the city manager. And if I could, before we get started, maybe before our next meeting in this room, we can try to make sure that we test out the mics and get the volume squared away all the way around. It's, I think it's important for anyone in the audience or the public to hear the business that occurs here, so anyway, but please proceed, Mr. Shields.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. A couple of things I'd like to report on tonight, and I will lead with a report to council on the discussion that we had in the context of the budget for ARPA and year-end surplus on vacancies. So what I'd like to cover tonight just briefly is the numbers and our plan for improving our recruitment efforts and retention efforts in the city. We do have Steve Mason, our HR director, on the call with us tonight, and I think one of the key things for all of us, and me in particular, is to ensure that we have a workforce that is, has the tools that it's need, that it needs to be successful, has positive work environment and a constructive work environment in order to serve our citizens. And so the vacancies has been a concern throughout this pandemic. It really did start with the decision to have a freeze on hiring, which was done really out of an interest of protecting our workforce in the event of a sharp decrease in revenues, which we did experience as we note that in absolute terms, we do have less dollars in FY21 than we did before the pandemic. And so the economy has taken a hit, and that's shown up in our tax revenues, and our employees have stepped up and done amazing service and heroic service throughout the pandemic in very difficult times. And one of the things that is particularly difficult is when we are down-staffed, it's incredibly stressful in terms of workload, in terms of covering shifts, in terms of providing essential services. But let's talk about the numbers. In terms of our workforce that we have, we have an approved workforce of 228 full-time equivalent positions, and that's across the board, including the capital fund, that includes the sanitary sewer fund, water fund, and the general fund. Of that workforce of 228 positions, we currently have 27 vacancies, and so that is overall a 12% of our workforce. We have vacancies at the current time. Over the course of this year, we have hired 35 new employees, and so that's a great credit, I think, to the city, that it is an attractive place to work and that we are very successful in recruiting talent to come and work in this city. This is a desirable place to work, and it's also a great credit to our HR department, which is one of our departments that is down-staffed right now, and we've been able to have that successful recruitment with a reduced staff. But over the same period of time, we've also had 24 employees either retire or take positions elsewhere. So 35 new hires in the past year, but also 24 staff members who have either retired or taken a job elsewhere. Of that 24, nine of those have actually retired, and the remainder have taken positions elsewhere. So this is, a couple of comments on it. One, it does have our full attention. It's stressful to the organization to be able to provide services when we're understaffed. We also acknowledge it's part of a national trend. We're in an environment where the pandemic has reshaped many people's views in terms of kind of existential questions about work and about their lives, and people are making changes in their lives. I think it's very important for us as leaders to listen to that and to make adjustments ourselves in terms of the type of workplace that we have that's adequately flexible, that empowers employees to do, to be excellent at their job, and to make sure that they have the tools they need to be successful. So that has our full attention. In terms of specifics in the HR department, the council approved a position with last year's budget to fortify our HR department with a recruitment specialist position. We made an internal lateral adjustment to move our benefits manager over to recruitment, given the importance of that for the organization right now, and we're recruiting for the benefits manager. So I want to thank Steve Mason for his aggressive actions to try to serve the organization in meeting these needs. And the thing that I will also just note is that I think we do have resources to help, and we are engaged right now in a listening process to the community and to our workforce in terms of the ARPA budget decisions that are before us coming up in November, as well as the use of the 2021 year-end dollars. And I want to note for the public, we have two upcoming sessions that are designed to get information out on our budget situation and get your input in. And the first is on October 27th at 7:00 PM. That's coming up on Wednesday at 7:00 PM. We'll have a virtual meeting on MS Teams. The intent is to make it as convenient for people to participate as possible to discuss the budget decisions that will be before council in November. We'll have a second town hall session on November 4th, which is Thursday after the election, and that will be at midday, at noon, and that also will be a virtual session. We're also working right now to schedule some smaller kind of focus group outreach with targeted communities to get input in. All of our materials will be, or are now being translated, so we want this to be an all-inclusive discussion for the community to help inform the best possible decisions on these really important strategic decisions that the council will be grappling with. When we come back on November 15th with a proposal for a budget amendment for discussion at work session, and then potentially, if the council deems it to be ready, first reading for a budget amendment, then on November 22nd, and second reading on December 13th. So look forward to those sessions. We're also having sessions with employees to engage them on these decisions as well and meeting the needs of our workforce. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that council has on these matters. The only last thing I will just note in terms of the manager's report, on Saturday, November 6th, we're having the kickoff to the East End Small Area Plan. This is the area, if you can kind of envision the Eden Center over to BJ's warehouse, and then kind of in the other direction over to 24 Hour Fitness. This portion of the city is next up for a small area plan. So on Saturday, November 6th, we'll have a kickoff session with the public from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Columbia Baptist Church. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks, Mr. Shields. Of those 27 vacancies that you mentioned, are they spread evenly throughout departments, or do some departments, are they more affected?
Thank you for that question. So it is not spread out evenly across departments. So one of the areas that has our greatest attention is DPW, and specifically our DPW operations. We know, we knew, or we anticipated that there were going to be a number of retirements this summer, and those have occurred. We've also had some younger employees who have taken work elsewhere, at Fairfax Water, Town of Herndon, and other places like that, and that has our attention. Steve Mason and Zach Bradley led an effort to study our DPW operation salary structure, and we have made adjustments to that salary structure effective this year to try both to address the salary concerns that were in that work unit specifically, but also to set the stage for favorable recruitment to fill the vacancies we have in that area. The only couple other notes that I will say is in recreation and parks, we have two, we have three vacancies in rec and parks. That's 18% of that workforce. And in police, we have five vacancies, and that's 11% of our police department. We do have an over-hire policy for the police department where they can go out and hire above their approved positions to try to make sure that we're always fully staffed. So when we're down five, that's a big deal for the police department, and so we're working very hard to recruit dispatcher, which is a vacancy, as well as three police positions that are vacant, and one PSA position. I see that Mr. Mason has stood up as well, and he is here at your service to answer any questions as well, and to add to anything I've said.
All right, welcome.
Mayor Tarter, members of city council. My name is Steve Mason. I'm the Human Resources Director. The one statement that I did want to make is that we are in unprecedented, uncharted waters when it comes to human resources. Our recruitments are down, so the receipt of applications has actually been down, but it's not academic to just Falls Church. This is a nationwide, this is a regional issue. A lot of not just general employees, but public safety employees are not coming to local government right now. But one of the things that I chose to do, and I asked for support from the city manager, was to put the emphasis on talent acquisition that it requires. For several years, compensation manager Latonya Hall was also the talent acquisition manager, and I felt, I felt that talent acquisition deserved an equal role to compensation as well as benefits. So with that being said, Megan DeSalle has decided to look at this new opportunity, and she'll be a great representative to the city in regards to talent acquisition, and I should have a new benefits manager onboard within the next few weeks.
All right, that should be a great benefit. Thank you. Are there other comments? Are you done?
Just two follow-ups to my first question, which are, the 27 vacancies you mentioned, does that include people who have just recently announced their retirement or that they're leaving? Or is this just current, right-now snapshot?
So one retirement that is going to happen this week is our deputy chief of police, Mr. Dan Zikula, who's retiring after 36 years of service to the city. That is a big moment for the city. We'll be having an event for him on Thursday, but so that is included in the number. Nancy Vincent, who's also announced her retirement, that's effective January 4th, that is not included in these numbers.
And then just one question for you, Mr. Mason, which is, are there computer programs, anything we can help funding-wise, where recruiting-wise, people putting in applications? Do they need to be upgraded, updated, so that they are at a level of the private sector so that people can really get their applications in quickly and they can get to departments? Is that something that the city needs from council?
Well, we are working right now to implement our Munis applicant tracking and employee self-service modules, so that is going to help us modernize the process itself. As far as funding is concerned, we've already had the Munis modules for a couple of years now, and there may be some assistance needed in regards to that implementation, but we really are looking at using that module to move us forward in our applicant tracking process.
And what's the timeline on the Munis? How quickly, how long is it going to take? Because I know it's taken a while already.
Well, at the beginning of the pandemic, I actually had two Munis implementers that were ready to come onboard, but because of the pandemic, they had to step back, and they have not been available throughout this whole pandemic. So we are going to have meetings with Tyler Munis in the very next few weeks to see how long it's going to take us as far as implementation is concerned, but I do have a backup plan just in case.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I feel like I should remember this from our budget deliberations in the past, but how much does a 3% increase for city staff cost us?
Ms. Baba, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. Good evening. Council, that's going to be around $600,000.
$600,000 on the city side, and presumably if we did that, schools would expect the same thing. I have a back of the envelope for how much a 3% would cost on the schools' workforce?
I will have to give you that number either by email or at the next meeting. I want to make sure I have it.
So their total employee count is around 500, right? And ours is around 200, so roughly, it's going to be double at least. Okay, well, I just wanted to get a general idea of what we're headed into. That's the kind of information I know you'll have for us when we make our decisions. Are you doing a budget and finance meeting again before we meet on the-
Yes, there's one on November 19th.
Great, okay. Okay, thanks.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse and Ms. Hardy?
I'll let Ms. Hardy go.
Thanks. I actually had a similar question. So I think, Wyatt, last time we talked about ARPA and the surplus, I think you were proposing kind of premium pay for frontline employees. I think what we've heard from employees is that they would like to see us give the 3% equivalent to what the salary areas would have been. And I think I heard Ms. Baba say it was $600,000. In fact, I think the school board's actually talking about doing that one time, and it's going to cost them, according to the school board document, they were talking about tomorrow night, $1,040,000. And so pay equity, I think, has been important to this council, and so if the schools would like to do that, I'd like to make sure that it's up for consideration for us to do on general government as well. Is that something that we have an option to talk about?
So what was-
So what was presented last, at the budget meeting a week ago, was a 3% converted into a bonus. And it would be payable in, before the winter holiday and then a second payment in March. I am on a listening tour right now with employees to get feedback on that proposal. That is kind of a, you know, something that we've been discussing. But look forward to engaging with council on how best to handle this.
Let's make sure we stay in sync with the schools on that.
We have been. We've been in discussions with the schools. And I think it's important for kind of everybody to be aware of that throughout this pandemic and really for probably the last couple of years prior to the pandemic, there has been, I think, pretty effective coordination between the schools and general government on matters of compensation.
And these would be for current employees? Or do they have to show some term of service? Like, who would be eligible if we did something like this?
It would be for current employees. And we would, you know, we administered a budget, a bonus last year. And we, currently, the proposal that's on the table for discussion is to follow a procedure that's very similar to last year. So there are some cutoff dates where if you were hired after a certain date, then you would not be eligible for the bonus.
I've seen competing organizations offer signing bonuses. So I'm not sure if that's something that we're up against in the market, but it's something I think it's worth more discussion as well.
Yes, we do need some more discussion on that because there is a state law in regards to bonuses and that those have to come before council for approval.
Great. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Steve, from a talent acquisition perspective, has our approach been to create a running repository or bullpen of potential candidates that we'd want to go after that we know work in other jurisdictions?
Yes. In fact, that's the difference between recruiting and talent acquisition. Is that when you see the talent, when you find the talent, you're able to go after it. That was kind of a no-no in local government before. But now that is, that is kind of like the standard in regards to talent acquisition.
It's certainly been the standard in the private sector for quite some time, as you are well aware. And I figured that was probably the case, which leads me to my next question. And this is, as a business owner myself, I absolutely sympathize, empathize 100% in the challenges of recruiting qualified candidates. And part of it is just, in some cases, people just don't want to move. I mean, we've got economic activity and growth, and we have positions to fill. But given the changing environment, the landscape over the last 18 months, in some cases, yes, it's a money issue. In some cases, it's a work-life balance. But in some cases, it's just fear of the unknown and not leaving what you have and not knowing what you're going into, what might be around the corner. So I certainly appreciate that. So from a talent acquisition perspective, with these conversations that you're having, obviously, compensation always factors into most of these conversations. But has there been a pronounced discussion over, this discussion of a work-life balance, flexibility, working out of the office, discussion around culture? How much of these, kind of the softer side of the equation, is playing into this conversation versus the pure compensation piece?
Well, I would say that they are actually playing very heavily into it. In fact, most surveys will show that salary is not in the top five. A lot of times, it is a well-being program. It has to do with learning and development, with opportunities to move up in an organization. And we're trying to address all those things by, again, allowing talent acquisition to have a full focus in the city government.
Sure. And it's interesting. I mean, I'm seeing the exact same thing in the private sector as well. And so kind of here's my food for thought. And Steve, I'm probably preaching to the choir here. I'm sure that you guys have been all over this. But I would also, in addition to solving for the vacancy challenges, in addition to making whole the individuals in the various offices, Jody, your office in particular, and others that were, I mean, frontline, in the middle of this and didn't have the opportunity to work from home, which I'll talk about in a minute. I would welcome an investment in different, what's the best way to describe this? Cultural changes to some extent in the way that we look at the non-compensation aspects of our workforce. So when you think about this idea, this broader idea of work-life balance, what are the things that we can do here in City Hall in our workforce in the culture of how we run our city government and our staff that plays into that desire? Because I'm seeing the exact same thing where you can throw money at folks. But in some cases, amounts of money that you think would be meaningful for someone to move from one job to the next just is simply not the driving force right now. And if that, I don't know if that's going to maintain. I don't know. But I'm seeing the exact same thing. So I would actually welcome some creative solutions and investments that we can make that give folks whatever that X factor is that they need to say, you know what, Falls Church is doing it differently than Herndon. They're doing it different than Fairfax Water. They're doing it differently than other places. And that's a place that I want to work. They've set up a culture and a mindset and a philosophy and programs that fill whatever that need is that gets them over that finish line. So that's, as we continue to talk about money, I would support an investment in that. I don't know how to make that cake necessarily. I just know that that's the cake that we probably need. And so I'd leave that up to you, Steve. And I know that you've nailed that. Jody, to your point, and thank you for those comments today and thank you from other staff that have written in, I will say admittedly, I know folks were strained. And I know that we had to make some difficult decisions around budget and pay. Totally recognize that. But I think as a lot of us who have been treading water ourselves and dealing with our own personal lives and professional lives, I don't know if I necessarily recognized exactly how far our staffing levels had fallen. And I don't think in totality, up until really the last couple of weeks, I'd taken the time to think about exactly what was given up and sacrificed over the last year or so. And so I support, you know, recognition for that. You know, building back that pay structure, making folks whole for that compensation, and doing what we need to do to get back to, at the very least, that baseline expectation and recognition for the sacrifices that staff had made. So I do, I fully appreciate that. To the extent that we're dealing with vacancies in very critical areas, I have two points. One, I think that the DPW loss, even though it's very pronounced, I think some of that loss was driven by losing, you know, a fairly recognized and beloved leader in Robert Goff. And I'm sure that that has to play into it. And so I think to some extent, you know, finding that next level of leadership that is going to build that next generation of folks that are beholden to DPW. Because in some cases, folks that do that type of work, I mean, they do it because they enjoy it, but they also do it because it's the folks that they work with on a regular basis. And that plays into that critical component. And so I think from a leadership development perspective, which we do have good leadership now, but it was a big loss with Robert Goff leaving. And I think that part of that vacancy, a pronounced vacancy, has something to do with that. And that's something particularly in that department, I think, that is incredibly important. And then secondly, one of the concerns that I have had over the last month and recent conversations, I am concerned about the morale in our law enforcement community. And it's not because, it has nothing to do with the leadership of Chief Gavin. I think that she's absolutely remarkable in every way. I just think that that's a very, very challenging industry to hold a job in right now. I mean, it's been an incredibly difficult 18 months for law enforcement agencies. I feel like that they are literally taking fire on all sides. And so that's an area that I'd like to pay particular attention to in terms of providing them with the support they need. Not just finding the candidates, overstaffing to make sure that those vacancies are filled, but providing them with, you know, again, those softer resources that seem to permeate every discussion about hiring and work-life balance and where you want to spend your day and with what people. And so for what that's worth, you know, again, I'm asking for creative solutions, not just making whole, not just increasing salaries, not just bonuses, not just filling these positions. But in some cases, a wholesale rethink of how we manage our workforce and what it means when you say you work for the city of Falls Church. And so those, you know, that's my, you know, that's my ask that we work into, whatever this budget consideration is, filling that need in addition to the hard numbers, in addition to the actual hard dollars that go into the paychecks of the folks that have really sacrificed over the last 18 months. And so all that to say, again, we've got some opportunities here to fix some of these issues and to really create, I think, some systemic, long-term change that will allow us to continue to stay ahead of this problem in the future. But it's certainly not from lack of trying by staff because I know you guys have been working very, very hard. But it's just an incredibly difficult environment out there right now. And I hope for the sake of many folks, businesses that are hiring here in the community, city staff, school, that we turn the corner somehow. But I think it's going to require us to make some wholesale changes in the way that we think and approach staffing and hiring in the city. So Steve, thank you very much. You guys have got my support wherever we need to spend these dollars to make sense out of that. Because if we don't hire good folks, can't have them committed in the long term, especially in local government, to get to know the city and the community itself, it's just, it's a churn that just creates very ineffective governance of a community as a whole. So I fully support these initiatives and look forward to making some difficult choices, but needed choices, to get us back on the right track. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Bawa, did you have your hand up or is that from an earlier comment?
Mayor Tarter, I have a response to Councilmember Duncan's question on the pay increase number for the school. So 1% increase on the school is approximately $400,000.
All right. So each 1% costs $400,000.
For the school staff, yeah.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So when these surprising numbers were first presented to City Council last week, a couple of us did begin the conversation that's continuing tonight. And it's a very important conversation to have. It would have been helpful to know the magnitude of the issue before. However, once it was presented, I think you've heard that the City Council is interested in addressing this and interested in addressing it expeditiously. I frankly am interested in recruiting and retaining the very best employees that we can get and especially for starting with essential services. But I think most of the services the city provides are essential. So I won't repeat some of the detailed suggestions and comments that other council members have made because they should all be considered. This is, however, a multifaceted issue. And one, I think, Steve Mason made the great point, we're part of larger trends. But that's not an excuse for not moving forward. Nobody views it as that. And so I'm convinced this council will do what it needs to do to provide the resources to support the efforts to recruit and retain the very best. Second point I want to make is that this conversation occurred within the context of really balancing three fundamental budgetary issues. First of all, the surplus from the most recent fiscal year, ARPA money, and then projecting going forward, realizing that as we raise compensation, as we employ more people, that's not a single-year effort. So I think it's ongoing and appropriate that we work through these issues in the context of balancing all of those things to make sure that we're providing adequate resources. And one other self-evident point, which is, everyone in our city has dealt with an extraordinarily difficult, unprecedented situation in the past year. That certainly means our city employees, but it also means each and every one of our citizens. So we take their views and their budgetary issues in mind as well. But our first and foremost job is to assure and support a city that does the job for which it was created. And so I think you've heard our commitment to address these issues. The only thing that I wish was that I had known about it earlier. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And unless there are any other comments, why don't we move on now to the business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first time? Thank you, Mr. Mason. Look forward to further conversations and further working with you. Madam Clerk?
Yes. We have TR 21-33, Resolution Requesting the General Assembly to amend Section 4.14 Appointments of the Charter of the City of Falls Church to replace qualified voter status criteria with age of at least 18 years.
Mr. Shields? Ms. Mester's been leading this effort, so I'll let her give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, Mayor and City Council. This item was discussed at work session. And the item that before you today is to request you to authorize a public hearing and then final consideration of this charter amendment resolution at your November 8th meeting. And of course, advertise it pursuant to law. The staff report does include a description of what's required within the charter, to amend the charter. There's three ways to do it. The one that's before you is council formal action. To do so, does require a public hearing in 10 days prior to your vote, hence the request this evening to authorize that advertisement. This item came before you, as you heard during the public comment today, from the Board and Commission Review, with a focus for removing the voter qualification because it precluded inclusion and diversity of non-residents to participate in your community engagement with citizens on your advisory boards and commissions. So in the staff report, we do outline the language change. This would need to go to the General Assembly. Once approved on November 8th, we would formally forward it to Senator Sasse Law and Delegate Simon and request legislative language to be introduced at the January 22nd, 2022 General Assembly Session. I have spoken to them to give them a heads up that it's coming, but we need the formal language before they'll draft it. They are supportive of the anticipated City Council request. During the work session discussion, you'll see on staff line, staff report line 49, there was a question from council about the definition of residency. So the city attorney did review that as a follow-up to the work session discussion. And you'll notice in the staff report, there's no requested change to the proposed language because residency is defined in the city charter. And so felt there was no additional requirement. We will, of course, change the application for boards and commission membership to make sure that's clear. And city attorney, of course, welcomes any further questions and conversation. So what's before you at line 61 then would show you the change to the language that we would consider for public hearing and action on November 8th. And then the staff report does include that resolution. With that, Mayor, staff will be glad to entertain any questions that you have this evening or input.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks for that, Cindy. So I had the question on the residency aspect during work session. So just so I'm clear, so the application will change because my concern was you're claiming residency in the city, but are you actually living here, right? So if we're not requiring folks to vote, get it, understand the spirit of this, but you do need to actually be a resident. So how do we confirm that folks are actually living here and they don't just claim an address, a piece of real estate that they own?
Sure. I think, so part of the qualified voter status has always been residents within the city. And that has been essentially, applications provide the address. We have not, I believe, the clerk's office has not gone behind to investigate that somebody actually lives at that address. Certainly, if we received some complaint that somebody didn't live there, I think we would definitely look into that. But when the application is filled out, it includes the address. If they provide a city address, we treat them as a residence. And that's how that's always been done because residence has always been part of qualified voter status. It's the citizenship part that we're stripping out of the definition.
Okay. I don't, I'm not going to make this, I'm sorry. Selass, did you want to?
And on the application, you actually do certify that you would be a qualified voter? So that'll change on the application. We'll have to.
Yeah, I'm not going to make a mountain out of a molehill because I think the instances of this would be relatively small, if not nonexistent. So I feel good about that.
And folks let us know that they've already attended a meeting. People are required to attend at least one meeting of the board before their application comes in. So they click a box and say, yes, I've done that. We don't usually run, we take their word for it.
Yeah, I don't think, from an appointments perspective, we've ever come across anyone that's applied or we said, hey, you don't live here.
Well, given that we currently have a certification for the qualified voter status, which will come out, we could certainly ask that there be a certification that they're actually living at the residence address they provide. And that might be useful because it might make people think twice if somebody's really trying to misrepresent.
I think that's fine. I think we're, you know, again, I think we're, you know, again, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill here, so I just was asking, as the city continues to grow. So I think that this is fine, and it's got my support with these changes. Appreciate it.
All right. Other comments? Ms. Hardy?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I move to authorize a public hearing and final consideration for TR 21-33 for November 8 and advertise the same according to law. I also wanted to thank staff for the research on this. I know that charter changes are not something we take lightly, and so this feels like appropriate low-hanging fruit to make sure that our boards are more inclusive and welcoming. So thank you for the work.
Sure. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Is there any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you call the next item?
Yes, we have TR 21-32, Resolution to Name the Streets at the West Falls Economic Development Project.
All right. Who's doing this? Mr. Shields?
Ms. Carly Aubrey will handle this item.
Good evening, Council. Carly Aubrey with the planning staff. Council is requesting to refer out the resolution for proposed street names for the West Falls Economic Development Project, which will be a new mixed-use district adjacent to the city's new Meridian High School and near the West Falls Church Metro Station. Given the significance of the site and because there are five proposed street names, the recommended criteria and procedure for naming the streets within the development is the City Code Section 2-210, Naming of the Public Property or Facilities. And that requires that the naming be done by council resolution, a public hearing be held, and recommendations sought from the Planning Commission, Historical Commission, Wreckin Parks Advisory Board, and any other boards or commissions deemed appropriate. The applicant, SCGP Development, has provided a map with the proposed street names, along with the narrative for the benefits and reasoning behind the names, and both of those are included in the staff report. At the October 18 work session, City Council provided comments and recommendations on the proposed names. Overall, the consensus was that proposed names were good choices, and agreed that it was important to use the name of the development, West Falls, as one of the streets for the Main Street. There was questions and input, and getting public input from residents regarding West Falls Boulevard name, and to make clear that recommendations from the public are welcomed. And then other recommendations were to use a suffix other than street for West Falls. Recommend Meridian for Street A leading to the high school. Two names starting with M and having three syllables may be confusing. And then finally, to make sure that coordination with Fairfax County was done for future extension to the metro station. We have received preliminary feedback from Fairfax County regarding the use of West Falls. They did say that it is already in use and would not be available. We have made further outreach with the county in hopes of reaching a consensus on that proposed name. Staff analysis in the report includes that if West Falls is used, it should have the Boulevard suffix to better denote the type of street that it will be, that it will also help differentiate it from other streets within the city that have the word Fall in it, and will help brand the site and call out its connection to the metro station. If it is not used, then staff recommends the use of Magnolia Boulevard for Commons Drive, and then the other present Magnolia Street proposal could be named after another Virginia bird. In conclusion, staff recommends that council refer the resolution out to the listed boards and commissions, and begin the public input process with an anticipated final action date of December 13. We have, we do have Matt Steenhook with SCGP on the line also, if there's additional questions for him. Otherwise, I can take questions and comments.
Couple of questions. Carly, I see Arbor Way, if I'm reading the map correctly, is a non-contiguous, there's a sort of South Arbor Way and a North Arbor Way. I don't think that they connect, and I'm not sure that if I were looking for an address on South Arbor, or on Arbor Way, that turned out to be north, not south, that it would be immediately evident where I was going. Has there been any thought to either giving it a different name or delineating it as north and south?
We could look at that. I don't know if Matt, if you had any thoughts on that. I'm trying to think if there would be anything addressed on that street.
Yeah, that I don't know. I mean, it's, North Arbor Way would be across from the school pickup, but Block C will presumably have some sort of businesses in it. Anyway, just take a look at it. Magnolia Street is the same, but if you're on, you know, East Magnolia, and it turns out you want to find an address on West Magnolia, all you have to do is just cross the West Falls Boulevard, and you would find your way, I think. That seems fairly transparent. The other question was, on the map that I have, Block B has reference to Starling Lane. What is that? I don't see that in the list of suggested names. What is that?
I'm not sure. Oh, okay. Matt, if you want to address that?
I believe that is what's formerly known as a typo, or a whoopsie, because that shouldn't be there. That's not one of the names currently under consideration.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Other comments? Questions? Mr. Snyder?
Just a quick question. Is it fairly clear from the materials that we're not only asking for comments on the recommendations, but if someone has some great ideas, they can also respond accordingly? Is that fairly clear, Carly?
We could add that to the motion, and I do have a draft, write it up to get put on the projects webpage, pending referral out, that asks for public input. So I think that can be added to the motion also, to make that super clear.
Okay. I don't want to spend a lot of time at this, but just if it's clear somewhere in the materials that we're not only asking for comments, and hopefully they'll support the recommendations, but if someone comes up with something we haven't thought about that might be really good, might be useful to add that to our consideration. That's my only comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Other comments? Vice Mayor Conley?
Ms. Aubrey, it says, you said that we would refer to certain boards and commissions and could add others if we so choose. I think because we're talking about trees here, it should go to the Urban Forestry Commission.
Okay.
Thanks. We don't have a ornithology commission, but maybe Urban Forestry can look at that, too.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Carly, I love the changes. In fact, added Boulevard, I think that's great. I support these, but as Dave Snyder said, people got new ideas, better ideas. I'd like to hear those, too, but overall, I think these are great. So I'd like to, I'd like to move this. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to move to refer TR 21-32 to the Planning Commission, Historical Commission, Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, and School Board's schedule a public hearing for December 13, 2021, and advertise the same according to law.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we get to a vote, I'm just going to have a comment or two real quick. I didn't get a chance earlier. I do think, again, even if there's a conflict in Fairfax County, we ought to try to get another name that is place-making. Maybe it's not West Falls Church Boulevard, but, you know, Falls Church Center. I don't know what it is, but I think it's important to connote where you are by names, and I think it would be beneficial to this project for people to find their way here. I would also suggest that there's potential conflict with other streets in the city, that maybe this is a four-digit number, as opposed to the three digits that most other addresses in the city have. So I think there are things we can do to avoid confusion. We ought to consider those as we go forward. But otherwise, I'm supportive as well. So we have a motion on the table. I'm going to ask for any public comment. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Do we want to, can I, I'm sorry. Do we want to add UFC to the motion?
I'd like to add that to the motion, adding Urban Forestry Commission.
Okay. Yep. All right. Go ahead. It's done. And our second or whoever that was you.
Very bad second, is it? Okay.
All right.
And just a quick question of the mover and second, or can there be something in the motion about we're also not ruling out other suggestions?
Yes. I'd like to add that to my motion as well. Celeste is not happy right now. So we'd like to add, I can, it's all I can see in the eyes, I don't even need to see the face. We'd like to add Urban Forestry Commission, as well as language, I think Karen will have to get involved in this one, adding language that boards and commissions can provide additional names that council will consider in...
Does a public hearing define?
Final reading. Huh?
By saying public hearing, doesn't that indicate that the public can contribute, or does that not?
I don't know.
I just feel like if we do, every time we said public hearing, then you should make, every time we said public hearing, you should make, you would need to add that statement that you can contribute ideas as well.
I take back, I don't want to get involved in this motion, but I do support this.
I'm not trying to make it complicated. I'm saying if we define public hearing as an ability to contribute your ideas, then public hearing suffices in a motion, or in the actual legal context of it.
And I think with all of that input, you don't have to amend the motion, but when you refer for public hearing, you can simply provide that as guidance to the bodies to whom you're referring it.
All right. Great. Let's go ahead and get on with the vote.
And that'll be in the record in the minutes, too.
I'm ready to vote, yes.
Great.
So we just added the UFC to the referral of boards.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Madam Clerk? Let's do this vote.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Let's call the next item.
All right. Thank you, Carly. So we have TR 21-09, Resolution to Grant a Special Exception for Residential Uses Within a Mixed Use Development Project, and to Increase the Building Height with a Bonus of 40 Feet to a Maximum Height of 115 Feet for a Development Project on Approximately 4.63 Acres of Land Located at 101, 191, and 201 West Broad Streets, and 150 South Washington Street, and a Parcel on South Maple Avenue, Real Property Code Numbers 52-305-027, 52-305-024, 52-309-119, 52-305-014, and 52-309-116, on Application by Atlantic Realty Companies Incorporated. And did we want to consider the next item along with this?
Yes. Go ahead. Just call them all.
TR 21-37, Resolution to Amend Special Warranty Deed Dated July 23, 2013, as Document Number 2013225078, Among the Land Records of Arlington County, Virginia, the deed to Permit Residential Uses on Two Properties Located at the Intersection of South Maple Street and West Broad Street, Real Property Code Numbers 52-309-116 and 52-309-119.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Carter, members of council. We have Akita Ruzi as a principal planner and our lead planner for this case. I would ask her to make a staff report for this project, and I would note also that we're joined at tonight's meeting by the applicant, and he's represented by Andrew Painter with the law firm of Walsh &amp; Kalushy, and Adam Schulman is the principal with Atlantic Realty Companies, and he is also on this call to provide the council information. The staff recommendation on this item is to, is in favor of the motion, to refer this out to boards and commissions. There's a schedule in the staff report, which does have this, if this council does take that action tonight, that lays out the next steps in the process. I'll turn it over to Ms. Ruzi for a staff report, and she'll give a fuller description of the work that staff has been doing with the applicant, and how the staff report also reflects council input on this case as well. Ms. Ruzi?
Thank you. Good evening. This is Akita Ruzi with planning. The staff report for you this evening has not changed for the most part, but does include a few new sections. So I'd like to provide a quick summary and recap before I turn it over to the applicant for their presentation. Starting line three, council is being asked this evening to refer TR 21-09, the Special Exception Application for the Proposed One-City Center Project, to boards and commissions. The second item under TR 21-37 is a request for a deed amendment to allow residential use on the property. This item is included for information only and does not require action at this time or referral to boards and commissions. Staff recommendation, starting at line 14, is to refer the project out to boards and commissions to allow for public input and further development of the project prior to final consideration by City Council. City Council held a work session on October 12 and identified several areas for improvement, and they're listed, starting at line 71. These include some key objectives, such as community engagement, architecture and scale, affordable housing, open space and trees, parking and traffic impacts, commercial uses, bike and pedestrian connections, as well as rolling road history and context. Staff's recommendation would be for the applicant to continue refining these aspects of the project during the boards and commissions review period, and then come back to council with an updated application that responds also to boards and commission recommendations coming out of that period. Just to quickly recap the project summary and required land use actions for the record, starting at line 121, the proposed project includes a new mixed-use building at the intersection of South Maple and West Broad, as well as improvements to existing buildings at George Mason Square. As proposed, the new mixed-use building includes ground-floor retail, planned grocery use on ground floor at the corner of Maple and Broad, mezzanine-level commercial space of about 13,000 square feet, upper-level office use of approximately 33,000 square feet, six levels of residential use with 246 units above ground-floor retail and office, and then a structured public, structured parking garage. Proposed upgrades to existing buildings as part of the project include ground-level facade improvements to George Mason Square buildings, and upgrades to courtyard and plazas around these existing buildings. Applications on line 170 include special exceptions to allow residential use within the mixed-use development, and to increase in building height from a maximum of 75 feet in the existing B2 zoning to a maximum of 115 feet. So this item, this is item TR 21-09 proposed for referral this evening. In terms of staff analysis for comp plans, small area plan, and SE review criteria, staff's preliminary analysis is provided in the report, starting line 464, and has not changed since the October 12 work session. In terms of fiscal impact, the expected net annual fiscal impact at line 870 for the project is approximately $706,000. Staff has also received the applicant's cost assumptions on project improvements and VCs, so we've updated the community benefits comparison chart in Attachment 24. Ms. Mester, if we could pull up that attachment? That's okay? It's Attachment 24. Thank you. So the total estimated cost, and it's the last column, Cindy, of the, so the total estimated cost of the community benefits based on this chart is approximately $14 million, which is $56,000 per unit. This project yields the highest per-unit contribution among the projects on the chart. A lot of that is coming from the transportation and streetscape improvements included as part of this project. Those items are listed in the fourth column. Just to get an idea, the list includes 1,400 linear feet of streetscape, new bus shelter, four crosswalk upgrades, Broad Street mid-block crossing, and hog signal, South Washington traffic signal, bike share annual operating costs, and public parking. I'll just sort of wrap up with schedule. Tentative project schedule is provided at the end of the report at line 903. Should the City Council refer to project this evening, the project would go through boards and commission review in the next two months, and we would come back to council with those recommendations in January for a work session. The applicant would then submit a revised submission in early February, and then have two more work sessions with council with final consideration at the end of March. and then have two more work sessions with Council with final consideration at the end of March. Um, that's all I have from the staff report. I'm happy to take questions now or later, uh, otherwise the applicant, uh, is here, uh, ready to make a presentation as well.
All right, thank you very-
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Painter, I believe you're hopefully on the line. I would just ask, before we get started, to focus your comments and remarks on changes that have occurred since the presentation, uh, maybe two weeks ago, since that's fairly fresh in our minds. But welcome to-
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor Tarter, members of Council. Andrew Painter with Walsh and Kalushy. Ms. Mester, if we could pull up the presentation and maybe go to slide ten, just sort of skip over all the things that we've, uh, talked about. I feel like we were just in front of Council, you know, yesterday. Um, let's see. So just a couple of changes, um, not to go through all of these, um, you know, all the things for this, but we did increase the electric vehicle charging stations to five percent. Um, uh, we did make a commitment to, uh, provide twenty work-from-home units per floor, so that's about a hundred and twenty units, um, about forty-eight percent of the project. Um, we have, um, a commitment for Boards and Commissions and nonprofit use of our conference facilities at no charge, with a priority going to tenants, and, um, if there's an agreement between this applicant and the Chamber of Commerce, those tenants in the chamber would obviously have priority before outside users. Um, we have committed to, um, the bike share operating costs for a period of thirty years, uh, which is about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we made zoning, uh, or some, some changes due to the zoning ordinance, um, uh, related to the LED screen. Uh, we agreed to upgrade light poles along South Washington Street and other copperhead mast arms that are around the property, uh, and replace those with the current streetscape standards, including the acorn streetlights. Um, we have had a discussion, um, per the mayor's request, uh, with Recreation and Parks staff about the city star- city center park design and layout, um, and some of the programmatic elements of that. Um, we have committed to regionally and native, um, regionally-adapted plants, and then, um, by lowering the garage, we have also located exterior and interior rooftop amenities based on the garage, uh, following the ability to reduce that to, from nine stories to eight stories, uh, which, uh, is something that's called for in, uh, the downtown small area plan. If we can go to the next slide. Um, so, you know, just a couple of, of, of issues as far as the, the comments that we heard, and I want to go through these, um, uh, real quick, and again, Adam Schulman with Atlantic Realty is on here. Um, in terms of outreach and community engagement, uh, we did reach out to the Winter Hill neighborhood. We have not heard back, but I, I did see a letter come through from the Winter Hill Board of Directors highlighting some concerns. Uh, we hope to be able to schedule a meeting with them and continue working with them. Uh, in terms of supporting existing businesses and tenant outreach, um, just in terms of timing, if approval is granted, um, say in the first quarter of next year, and site plan approval is in the third or fourth quarter of next year, I, I would imagine that construction would commence, uh, thereafter and last approximately eighteen to twenty-four months. Um, tenants are obviously the most important asset to any aspect of, of a project, and obviously redevelopment, uh, involves a host of challenges. This is a little bit different than most of the redevelopments in the city because we are not, um, dealing with a host of, or a lot of, um, tenant displacements or anything like that. Uh, there's one tenant in particular, um, uh, the Matt's Tailoring, um, building, uh, which would be, uh, obviously demolished or replaced with a building. I did want to let you know that we have reached out to Matt's Tailoring. Uh, we have had, uh, I believe, uh, at least Atlantic Realty's had three, maybe more meetings with, um, uh, the owner or the operator of Ireland's Four Ps, uh, but we will continue reaching out to them as, as well as all of our tenants. Some of our tenants we had met with, uh, going back a year to eighteen months, uh, at the start of this, and, uh, we will reach out to them. Uh, we do agree with the comments from Mr. Gittens and Councilman Snyder. I, I think it's incumbent upon us to do what we can to minimize our impacts on the existing tenants caused by construction, um, by the removal of the existing parking garage and the public parking during construction. So, we have a series of voluntary concessions. Uh, one of the most important is VC forty-two, which appoints a ca- which appoints a community liaison to be present on the property at all times, at all hours of construction, even during weekends, and that information has to be provided to tenants and business owners. Uh, we have committed to a construction narrative which outlines how the construction would be phasing. Uh, voluntary concession twenty-six requires us to adhere to an interim and permanent parking plan, uh, and we have purposely located the interim parking along West Broad Street and granted Four Ps, fourteen of those spaces, right along West Broad Street. If you can imagine where the BBNT Bank Branch Building is, uh, it's, it's, it's very proximate to the main entrance. Uh, VC forty requires can, uh, us to provide a demolition and staging plan. Uh, VC forty-one requires us to prepare a traffic instruction or traffic and parking plan to address construction issues, um, and, and access issues during construction. Uh, VC forty-three requires us to monitor soil movement and structural damage. Uh, VC forty-four requires us to keep all sidewalks open with, you know, with the exception of those that we receive approval from the city manager for, and VC forty-six requires us to maintain roadway services and pavement integrity during construction. Um, so those are the commitments that we've made in our voluntary concessions. Um, Adam Schulman with Atlantic Realty, I don't know if you're available on the line, if you want us to talk to tenant outreach or, you know, discussions you may have had or anything like that, but, uh, wanted to recognize you if you wanted to say anything.
Uh, good, good evening, uh, Mayor Tarter and Council, and, and thank you, Andrew, for, for turning that over to me. Um, as, as it's been said by Andrew, and I think he put it as eloquently as, as I, probably more so, um, the, the tenants are the most important thing to us. It's, it's what we're focused on and what we're focused on retaining. Um, we've, I've known, uh, the owner of the Four Ps personally for close to twenty years, and I have had, uh, several meetings with him and will continue to do so. Um, it's my goal, not, as I told him, and he should be well aware, uh, that my, my goal is not just to say, okay, you know, trust that we're going to get it done, but it's, it's really to give him the comfort that we are going to look out for his, his best interest. And, uh, we'll, we'll continue to do so and continue to have discussions with him to make sure that, that he is comfortable with that. The, the same thing is true with, with Matt's Taylor in that, um, we have reached out to him and, and want to make sure he understands that he's welcome in this project, and, and we think that we can, we can find a, a space for him that'll, um, be, uh, enable him to, to, to stay in the city where, where he has been for so long, so that's, that's our goal. And to the extent that there have been other tenants that, that have, have wanted to meet with us and, and have expressed so, we, we've met and we will continue to meet with any tenants that are in that situation. That's something that we've done and have done for close to thirty years, and, and we, we've done projects like this that, in a similar fashion, we don't believe in the stiff-arm approach, and that, that's not something that we're going to go down with in, in, in this situation. So, um, I'll, suffice it to say with, with what Andrew said, that, that our tenants are extraordinarily important to us, and, and, and we view it as the heart of this project, probably more so than many other things that are, that are being discussed right now. And we'll, we'll continue to, to prove that to them.
Thank you. Ms. Mester, um, can we move to the next slide, please? So, in terms of urban design and architecture, we, we received several comments on this. The first is with respect to, uh, improving the existing George Mason Square. Uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to Adam as well, but I'll say a couple of prefatory remarks. Um, the George Mason Square, uh, three-office building complex is not technically a part of the SE application. We are making voluntary concessions, uh, to that as an off-site, uh, commitment. Of course, they are affiliated with Atlantic Realty as far as different ownership, but they are under a different ownership group, and we are providing improvements, again, as offsite improvements. They're under a different financing bucket. But I did want to say that we are doing facade upgrades, um, uh, you know, throughout the project, uh, at least to the first couple of levels. And again, the goal is to make that ground-floor experience much more welcoming and inviting, and ultimately successful, uh, that includes removal of the arcade at the intersection, the facade enhancements, uh, and renovation of the entire ground floor, pedestrian plaza with landscaping, hardscaping, and, and seating areas. Uh, one of the commitments that we have made is to add public art to a couple of the blank walls to make it look fresh and inviting. Um, and then, uh, I'll turn it over to Adam to talk about, um, uh, you know, additional measures that are being considered. Adam?
Well, um, you know, we, we have, in, in, in my opinion, gone fairly extensive on, on our work for, for George Mason Square. Like, like Andrew mentioned, this is not really a project that is, is part of, um, the, the, the one-city center project that we're referring to. With that said, it is immediately adjacent to it, and it, and it does so happen that, um, Atlantic Realty has, has an ownership in, in that project, but in a different form than, than what we're talking about here. With that said, um, I know that this is an important issue on, on what George Mason Square is going to look like, and I completely understand it. I didn't design the buildings by any means, and, um, you know, we're, we're going to do what we can to in- improve the feel for it. Where, where we've been focusing is on the first two levels, on that architectural arch that's, that's in front and in the park areas, but we know that, that there are issues out there that, that some want this to look different than it, than it does. So, we'll continue to work with the Boards and Commissions on that and figure out what, what we can do to make, uh, make the project and improve beyond the levels that we've already done. Um, you know, we, we can focus on, on the top to give this building the appropriate base middle and top that it, that it needs, um, and, and that's something that we'll continue to, to focus on. Um, we have been focusing on, um, putting dollars towards what we view were, were more critical areas to, to this improvement, and I don't want to take away from those, but I, I do think there's somewhat, something else that, that can be done here that would hopefully meet the, uh, the, the goals of, of what the citizens and, and Council is looking for.
Um, in, in terms of the massing and height of the building, uh, and the garage being close to existing residential neighborhoods, um, again, the proposed mixed-use building is to be a maximum of a hundred and fifteen feet in height, and, um, you know, we believe that that is harmonious with existing commercial development, and it's not disproportionate to surrounding land uses. Uh, as staff mentioned in its report, both the comprehensive plan and the downtown small area plan recommend the property for the core commercial area of the downtown, and it's in this spot, and pretty much only in this spot, that those heights are recommended. Uh, we are surrounded by commercial properties on all sides, and a hundred and fifteen feet, I believe, is what was previously approved under the prior duration of approvals here. Um, we did reduce our garage height from nine to, to eight floors, um, which is now lower than the building. We were then able to recapture that space and place residential amenities on that top level, which, if you go to the downtown small area plan, um, that is something that is recommended, uh, and we're, we're pretty excited to do that, actually. Uh, the total amount of parking was reduced from nine hundred and seventy-three spaces to eight hundred and seventy-five spaces, which now brings us to a parking ratio of one point three spaces per unit, which I believe is identical to Founder's Row and 301 West Broad Street. Um, in terms of the visibility of the garage from surrounding residential neighborhoods, uh, it should not be visible from any points to the west or the north. It's either blocked by the building itself being wrapped, uh, or there are existing intervening buildings. Um, and in terms of the Winter Hill townhomes, because I believe there was a, a focus on that, um, the closest home that is to it from a measurement perspective is about five hundred feet. Uh, that is blocked by, uh, the Harris Teeter, uh, wing, uh, and then the closest one that could possibly see it, uh, would be six hundred and fifteen away off of one of the side streets off of Gundry, um, but that is blocked by vegetation, the distance, and of course, the bowling alley, uh, as well. Um, and I'll also note, too, that adjacent to Big Chimneys Park directly across the street, um, the Harris Teeter building rises to its full height at nine stories there, um, just to provide, um, a bit of context. Uh, in terms of public art, um, we have a commitment to twenty-five thousand dollars for public art in the project, which I believe is in line with the other comparable SE projects that the city has considered. Uh, like, I think Founder's Row also had twenty-five thousand dollars plus a commitment to work with, uh, the Little City Catch Foundation for programmatic opportunities. We're happy to, to have that discussion with the Arts and Humanities Council as well to go forward on a similar commitment. Um, in terms of additional murals, um, we have included murals on the two blank walls, uh, of George Mason Square, and then we have been in touch with staff also regarding the entry feature right at the corner of Broad and Washington for the use of a local stone that's called Trond de Mite, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, but that's a pink granite that was mined from a quarry at Turner Hill, which, that quarry is no longer in existence, but the Department of Public Works does have some of that stone, and that we've agreed to incorporate that into an entry feature as well. Um, in terms of outdoor areas, uh, for, for dining opportunities, um, there was a question about the width of our streetscapes in particular. Our streetscape plans on all frontages do follow the streetscape master plans guidelines, so that means along South Maple Street, that's eighteen-foot sidewalks, along Anandel Road, that's sixteen-foot sidewalks. Uh, and along those two frontages, the buildings are not flat. Uh, in many cases, the buildings are set back a little bit further as well. Uh, and along South Washington, we will provide the minimum twenty feet, uh, of streetscape section. Um, but that streetscape along South Washington varies from twenty-two feet or so to about thirty-one feet. So, the full ten-foot of clear distance along all, you know, along all the streets, uh, will be provided even with outdoor dining opportunities. Um, in terms of housing affordability, um, as part of our community benefit package, we have started with, with six percent as sort of the baseline. Uh, we have had discussions with, uh, the city manager, and we're happy to sit down and, and continue those discussions, and we're confident that we can find a way to satisfy, uh, the city's and Atlantic goals on that. Um, there's also the concept of market affordability, and I think last time we spoke, uh, about the average, uh, unit size, uh, in the project, uh, the percentage of studios and one-bedrooms and one-bedrooms with work areas as well. But again, we, we are confident that we'll be able to, to find a, a solution forward as the project unfolds. Um, in terms of open space and parks, uh, one of the questions was whether or not we could ensure that we had outdoor electric outlets to accommodate tree lighting. Uh, we have voluntary concession nineteen C which provides those. Uh, there was the question about retention of existing mature trees. Uh, the tru- you know, those are being saved, we committed to that last time, and there are trees that are overgrown, some of them are in rough shape, and so any that need to be replaced would only be replaced in coordination with the city arborist. Um, in terms of the city center park, again, we met with Recreation and Parks staff between, um, the work session and tonight, uh, to look, you know, and we look forward to working with them, and it was suggested to work with the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board on the programmatic elements of that park. Uh, one of the thoughts that came up was incorporation of bocce ball courts, as well as exercise and fitness stations, um, a- as well. Um, in terms of the rolling road, um, this is an issue that Vice Mayor Conley had brought up. Uh, we are reaching out to the Department of Public Works and Rexon Park staff about what that space is, uh, what the challenges are. My understanding, and Ms. Ruzi might, might be able to elaborate, is that DPW is actually primarily responsible for that. They did install some benches and some trash cans, but they removed the benches uh, due to some vagrancies and, and waste, um, in the vicinity of, of, of that trail. Uh, we have also been advised to reach out to the Historical Commission to understand the full history, uh, that's being told about who, for example, the farmers were or who the people were that were involved, to make sure there's a complete history associated with that. Um, one of the questions about, uh, about the project was also with respect to the open space and, and, um, comparison for recent projects. I'm happy to go through those numbers. Ms. Ruzi may also want to go through those numbers, but we did provide those in terms of landscape open space, uh, tree cover, publicly accessible open space, uh, private open space, uh, and, um, publicly accessible, obviously. I may have already said that. Um, in terms of parking and traffic, if we go to the next slide, Ms. Mester. Um, we had talked about the garage height previously in another comment. Again, we have gone down, uh, one level. Um, there was one comment about the city should not pay for the public parking in the project. This is the three hundred thousand dollar issue, uh, and I'm pleased to report that, uh, we, um, are, you know, we've, I don't know if relent is the correct word, but we have agreed, uh, not to, um, seek that when we revise, uh, the parking agreement, uh, because there, you know, there's the parking agreement, there's the First Amendment to Parking Agreement, and then there would need to be a Second Amendment to Parking Agreement as well. Um, so that leads into the next issue, which is that any additional public parking should be made available, even if there's a cost to the consumer to address the public parking shortage in the downtown area. Uh, again, I think through the second parking, you know, amendment to the parking agreement, which we can work out, uh, between now and, and the time this comes back to Council, um, you know, that, that's a long-term discussion that we need to have. Um, but there is no plan at all to install any sort of parking gate for any portion of the parking, uh, garage except for the residential reserved spaces. Um, we want to make sure, obviously, that our tenants have adequate parking during business hours and things like that, but much the way that the Kaiser Lot works and the, and the existing, uh, George Mason Square, uh, parking lot works, there are agreements for weekends, nights, and that sort of thing, and that is something that would be addressed during, uh, or as part of the Second Amendment to the Parking Agreement. Um, there was a request about the short-term, the need for short-term delivery spaces, um, whether it's Uber Eats or other, you know, ride-sharing apps or something like that. Um, the good news is, at least, none of the streets along this frontage permit temporary parking. They also don't lend themselves from an urban, um, you know, driving perspective as far as just being able to pull over and block a full lane of traffic. Uh, we are, uh, willing to add into our voluntary concessions that says that a minimum of, of three spaces or four spaces on levels one and two, so on each side, proximate to, uh, the commercial area and proximate to the residential lobby, would be signed and stenciled for the short-term drop-offs and pickups, uh, food deliveries and that sort of thing. Um, next is the, uh, traffic on surrounding streets and intersections. I think I would start off by saying that we are very sensitive to the issues of cut-through traffics in neighborhoods. Um, of course, cars are going to go through the passive lease residence, whether you use the Waze app or, or whatever. Uh, we can't control that. Uh, the good news is that this site is not immediately adjacent to residential neighborhoods like, say, 301 West Broad Street was or Insights Broad and Washington project, but we still have to be concerned about how we listen to the concerns about traffic conditions. Um, the traffic impact analysis, the TIA, does demonstrate that the current level of service on the surrounding streets and these key intersections would continue to be maintained at the same level of the service with this project, uh, or in some cases even improved. Uh, and in terms of the, you know, relative to the byright, uh, uses on the property, uh, the project does generate a lower number of vehicle trips than current zoning allows. Um, and additionally, uh, we are doing our bike and pedestrian vehicle mitigation in terms of signal modifications, installation of new traffic signals, uh, and then other mitigation that was requested by staff, especially with respect to converting the Vuner Site, the entrance to the drive aisle to a right-in, right-out along West Broad Street. Um, the project does seek to improve non-automotive, um, uh, mobility in downtown Falls Church, and we have committed to a robust transportation demand management plan to reduce the number of single occupancy trips generated by the site. Um, there was a question that came up in some of the literature, uh, or the concerns that were raised about the traffic circle. Just to be clear, we do support a traffic circle, um, but this is a city project. Through our application, we have provided, uh, some design and engineering work to the city's, uh, designer and engineer, Rinker, uh, but this is a city project, it's a city, it's a city- It's a city design. The project could go with both a traffic circle or a traffic signal. It matters not, but I just want to let you know that that's not an issue for this application. It's really a city decision, so I wanted to make that clear. The next item was about 5% of the parking spaces should be electric vehicle charging stations. We will commit to increasing those to 5% EV spaces, which is 44 parking spaces. In terms of the bike share location, if you recall, we had moved the bike share location at staff request to the city center park. We are willing to commit to modify our voluntary concession to have it at either location to be determined by the city at time of site plan or building permit in conjunction with city staff. And again, we located it at the city site or city center park site due to the proximity of the bike share stations in front of the Harris Teeter, in front of the State Theater, and in front of the new scramble along East Fairfax Street. In terms of the commercial uses and fiscal impacts, we are continuing our leasing negotiation with a new entrance, grocery store entrance to the city. But this project and the fiscal impact of the city and the land uses, which are permitted on the ground floor and in the office areas, really are not predicated upon having a grocery store tenant at the corner. Certainly, that 25,000 square foot space right at the corner, ground floor, is trophy space. It naturally lends itself to a single tenant with its high ceilings, its concrete construction, and its overall size, but the retail and restaurant asset classes have certainly been hurt in recent years. We don't want to commit to any single use or tenant that would open us up to us overpromising and then under-delivering, and then everyone scrambling to try to find a way forward. And so, as a result, our baseline fiscal analysis with the city, you know, really should be considered conservative, and if we are to land a grocer in the space, you know, those numbers would obviously only go up. But I will say, too, that the commitment to the retail and the Class A office space in this project will serve to bring in a daytime population that will likely spend money at city restaurants with services and hopefully other retailers as well. Adam, do you want to say anything about, you know, the anchor space or anything right now, or just keep on rolling?
I would just keep on rolling.
Okay. In terms of the fiscal impact compared to other projects, Ms. Ruzzi had mentioned that earlier. It's about $56,000 per unit, which I understand is about $10,000 per unit more than the next closest comparable project. The city did calculate the expected fiscal impact to be about $744,000 per year to the city. We also conducted a net fiscal impact analysis, which included office tenant B-pole taxes, miscellaneous revenues at other new comparable projects in the city, resident meals taxes, that sort of thing, and the number that we came up with was, without taking account into inflation or the other fiscal benefits from construction, an annual net fiscal impact of the city of approximately $987,000. And I believe that's it. Oh, the last item on this list is the Chamber of Commerce. We continue to negotiate with them. We did reach out to them, you know, those discussions are ongoing. So, Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes my summary about the things that I've done since a week ago, I think a week and a half ago, but our entire project team is here, ready to answer any questions, and we appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Comments from council. Does anyone want to start and kick this off, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm always happy to kick it off. So first of all, Ms. Ruzzi, thank you for capturing all the comments from our work session. I think I saw there were 38 items in the staff reports. I appreciate your diligence on that. I'm going to pull ones out that I don't think Mr. Painter has addressed to my satisfaction yet. On the garage, starting with garage first, do we have any renderings of how the eight-story garage looks from all four sides, and is it all completely covered by the other buildings? Hello?
Ms. Hardy, is this question Ms. Ruzzi, or should I answer?
Either. I guess whoever has renderings of what the building, the garage, looks like from all four sides, that would be great.
Yeah, there are renderings in our project viewbook. So along the, obviously along the northern side, it's masked by the existing George Mason Square buildings. Along the west side, it's masked by, and most of the southern side, masked by the proposed building, and then it's on the eastern side that you would be able to see parts of the exposed garage, and then a small portion of it along, you know, next to the 150 South Washington Street. But there are renderings, I believe, of the proposed garage. If we don't have them in this presentation, we can provide them to you. Yeah, no, there are, you know, there are portions of it that are going to be exposed. I don't know if, Adam, you want to speak to that, or Thomas?
I think Thomas would be in a better position.
Yes, thank you. There's essentially two sides of the garage that are visible, two sides, in which we have introduced a combination of masonry, metal, mesh, artwork, and other materials to essentially cover the garage. So it's, so there's architecture that has been put on the garage facade, so it's not like, doesn't look like a garage. But, I mean, it is, it is.
It's a structure.
Ask you on the spot, but that would be helpful to see. I hear you that you're using different materials, but obviously, we want to make sure that it's something attractive. I think I heard the parking ratio is 1.3 per unit. Was that correct?
That's true.
And I think we have data, at least planning staff, I've seen planning staff's data, that we have utilization of below one, and so I'd encourage us to think about a parking reduction further, because then eight stories is quite big, and as much as I like to have public parking, I'm not sure we really need eight stories of it. While we're on architecture, I think in the past, I've made comments about the opportunity to really skin the entire building at George Mason Square as well as 150 South Washington, and I hear your comments that those are not part of the SE, but I feel like that is an opportunity to make sure that the entire corner is more harmonious. Clearly, you're spending a lot of money and in time thinking through the architecture on the other corner, and I really feel like we're missing an opportunity if we're not doing anything beyond the ground floor or the first floor. So that will continue to be a comment, so I encourage you to think about doing that. Current tenants. So I appreciate the list of VCs around kind of making sure we support the current tenants and have interim construction plan. Do you currently have support from all of your tenants and businesses?
Adam, do you want to answer that one?
I just want to make sure I understood the question. You ask me if I currently have support from all my tenants?
Yeah, are all the tenants on board with kind of the plan that's laid out, or are there outstanding concerns from them?
Well, let me put it this way. There's one tenant in particular that we will continue to have discussions with, but other than that, I have not had a tenant reach out to me and say, or her, for that matter, that they have concerns and are not in support, but I would not be able to sit here and tell you that I have support from all of my tenants because I'm not aware.
The importance of small businesses in our community. Affordable housing contribution. I didn't hear any movement based on the comments we made. Is that correct? We're still at kind of 6%, at 60% AMI?
We are at 60% AMI. We know that that number needs to increase, and we are committed to working, you know, we are committed to finding a way and hashing that out. So that's, yeah, and we did have a discussion, Adam, did we not, or someone had a discussion, I believe, with the city manager to talk through it?
I spoke with the city manager, Mr. Shields, last week on this matter, and have committed to sit down with him as soon as this week to continue having further discussions on that, and I think it sounded fairly optimistic from both of our perspectives.
They do.
Correct. Okay. And then, so while we're on VCs, I think I was also the ones that asked that we, given that we have, you're all proposing a ground floor anchor of a grocery store, is that written in the VCs right now that use, or is it just the commercial square footage?
It's just the commercial square footage.
Okay. Mr. Shields, at this phase for Broad and Washington, which had a similar mix of uses, I believe at first reading, we had a commitment around the grocery use. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. We did.
So I certainly don't expect you all to produce a lease. I think that's an appropriate bar to hold, to make sure that, given the large number of square footage that this grocery store is supposed to take up, we'd love to see a commitment on that usage as well. And the last point is, actually, two more. I was one of the ones also that commented that the $300,000 to pay for public parking was disappointing, so I appreciate the movement on that to take that out. I look forward to seeing that VC removed. And then the last one is the green space. Ms. Ruzzi, could we bring up that latest attachment in the long list of attachments? I saw that analysis. Thank you to staff for doing that. I think I was one of the ones that requested some sort of analysis on what green space, open strays, and tree canopy we've seen in the past, and so I appreciate the work that was done.
Sure. Actually, if you let me know what you want.
Ms. Mester, we could actually start from the staff report. Let me get to the line number. Let me get you to the line number. Yeah, yeah, so 696, yep, open space calculation, and I can sort of provide this information, and then Mr. Stoddard is also on the call, and he'd like to speak to this as well, but let me, let's see. So based on the information we have in the plan, the landscape open space is approximately 33,000 square feet, which is 16.5% of the site, and this calculation includes all planted open space. Publicly accessible open space is approximately 60,000 square feet or 30% of the site, and this includes all ground-level green and hardscape areas. Private open space is approximately 25,000 square feet, and that's 12% of the site. The tree canopy coverage is approximately 287 linear feet and 11% of the site. It is a separate attachment. Ms. Mester, that attachment should be, 26, attachment 26. And I might, so planning staff and the city arborists, we're working on updating that attachment and then coming up with a methodology that we can sort of consistently apply to all the projects, but I'll let Mr. Stoddard speak to that.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Ruzzi. I'm happy to speak to this one and take any questions on this. The, oh, here it is. Great. So this chart, really credit goes to the previous city arborist, Kate Reich, who pulled this together in coordination with the Urban Forestry Commission, I think over a period of time, to capture how is green space and landscaping space working across a range of projects in the city. First, the acronyms, at least as I understand them. ROP stands for rest of property. That's the gray bar that takes up the bulk of each of the sites. Green space, I think, refers to anything where there are plants. And then buffer includes either a required landscaping buffer from the site plan code or street trees on public property. This methodology has its roots in a couple of different places. The site plan code, the mixed-use overlay code, which actually isn't directly applicable to this since it's under the site plan version of the city zoning ordinance. That's one of the reasons for staff meeting internally to try and get a handle on terminology, but just to summarize where this lands, if you look at the various projects over time, you can see that the high watermark for open space in projects is actually the Pearson Square at 25%, and a lot of that is actually ground floor gated private courtyards that are accessible from the rear of the property through locked gates. The low point was at one point, one of the Mason rows, Founders Row approvals, had a 3% percentage there, and then for the rest of the projects, they range from, I got it written down here, between, it looks like 9 and 16% with the various breakouts in the open space. This one, as was mentioned earlier, they're proposing about 16 and 1/2% of their site to be landscaped, open space, so it's at the top of that middle tier.
Let's see, this one with better numbers. So while the fiscals and the VCs obviously are decent on this, I do have some remaining concerns between affordable housing, the architecture comments that I've repeated several times now, and then not really having a VC commitment to the ground floor use. So I think right now, the project, I think, needs a little more work. That's it for now. Thank you.
All right. Other comments. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions? Mr. Lipton House?
So I want to jump on the bandwagon here related to those retail tenants. Adam, I appreciate the commitment to working with the tenants that exist there now, both in the existing office building that would be impacted as well as the retail tenants. Specific to that commitment, I mean, the ongoing conversations that you're having, what, explain to me, explain to me what those commitments are that you're looking to make. You've talked about community liaison. We've talked about staging of construction, less disruptive aspects, but what are the nature of those conversations with those tenants in terms of the actual financial impact to their businesses during a very large-scale construction project?
So there's, I'm not sure if this is what you're getting to, but I'm going to try my best to respond. So there is one tenant that, like I said, we've been talking to extensively, and he does have concerns on how, not just construction on our project, but he has concerns on how construction on numerous projects is going to impact his business. What I have told him, and I think our history demonstrates this, is that first, with regard to other projects, that we will do our very best to represent him in the best way, that make sure that his business continues to thrive when there is construction going on that's not related to the construction that we're dealing with here. We will make sure that that other project is living up to all the standards that it has committed to, and to make sure that his project is, his restaurant is still able to go on and still maintain the level of success that it has had for so many years, and that's critical for us and certainly critical for him. With regard to this project in and of itself, he has expressed concerns on construction and how it is going to impact his business, and there are certainly several sides to that. There is the side of how parking is going to be impacted. There's going to be the concern of how people are going to be able to walk to his restaurant and how people are going to be able to interact when they sit outside, and we're going to do the best that we can while there is still a major construction project going on to make sure that his project, his restaurant is minimally impacted to the extent that we can, but we're not going to hide the fact, and it would be silly, too, to hide the fact that there is still major construction going on. We believe that through that construction, that he will be able to succeed as he has for so many years, and that we will do our very best to make sure that that is the case. With regard to the financial impact of whether or not construction on another project off-site or whether our project will have a financial impact for him, where we last left it, when we had a conversation on that, is that we both knew that that was somewhat of the elephant in the room and that there would be further conversations to be had. He was going to think about it from his standpoint, and I told him if I could come up with any other thoughts, that I would get back to him, but we both agreed that we would continue to sit down and have further discussions. I want to make it clear that during the pandemic, at its peaks, if you will, that there was really only one in-person meeting that I had had through that entire process, and that was with Mr. Dillon. I would continue to do so, and like I said, I've got a long personal and business relationship with him. I feel that his restaurant is critical, not just to our project, but it is an important aspect to the city, and I personally would hope that we could come out with a method that is a win-win-win for everybody, both for us, for the restaurant, and for the city as a whole. It's something that's very important to us, and I'm by no means looking to minimize the impact that his restaurant is going to go through. You know, at the same point, there's got to be a certain level of reality that's put through here, and I'm optimistic that we can all hit that. What we left it now is that we both agreed that we would come up with any other thoughts that we had, and we would get together again. I hope that answers your question.
That was set on the last project, and whether you agree with that precedent or not, I think that there is certainly an expectation in the community, certainly related to disruption of construction projects, that businesses are supported more than just community liaison and staging of a project, and whether a financial commitment is made in terms of that disruption, I'm not going to dictate that, nor am I going to weigh in on that, but I just want to, I want to point out that there was a precedent, and there's an expectation, I think, in the community for having that conversation to make sure that those businesses survive. Interestingly, in the last project, it was related to businesses that were technically on the site of the project itself, but these tenants themselves are smack dab in the middle of a major construction project, and one of the things that I personally, I think most folks on council and the community, the lens that we would look through for these types of developments, wherever they are in the city, is uh, wherever they are in the city is, you know, what do they bring or maintain that is unique to Falls Church? Uh, we, we love our local businesses here, our small businesses, ones that have been around for a while, ones that already draw to the community. Um, four Ps is certainly one of those, uh, and, and I can speak personally for Matt's Taylors. Uh, I don't know if we're beholden to the Hatch Act here, but I would tell you that guy is, uh, an absolute pearl. Um, I'm wearing one of his suits right now. Uh, I think that that guy's just a, a hidden gem. So both of those businesses, I think, are very important to the community, and we should do whatever we can to retain those tenants, keep them, uh, alive, keep them operating, uh, and, and make sure that they're not, um, having to scrape the bottom of the barrel to, to, to remain operating and successful during, uh, during a very difficult construction period. So thank you for that commitment, Adam. Again, I'm not going to ask to dictate any of those terms because that's not my business, but just a recognition of, of precedent and conversation and expectation and community and our, our sincere hopes that, um, those businesses will survive and thrive, uh, and come out the other end on a project like this and more than likely, uh, be more successful than they were with the, with the added foot traffic. So thank you.
If I may add, just to prove how important of a tenant he was and, and is to, to us, is that through the pandemic, he had come to me, and we've had numerous discussions, um, uh, at, at various times of the day, like I said, that we, 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 we have each other cellphone numbers and, and he would express to me concerns with opening times and, and, um, concerns about, uh, things as simple as, as the rent that he's paying. And I can tell you that we have made, um, through that period of time, significant, uh, modifications to his, uh, to his, his, his rent structure, if you will, without absence of an agreement. Um, it was just something that, that, that we've done and, and we've worked through, and, and that, that still has never been papered, has never been agreed to, but it is something that, that we felt strongly enough and, and dealt with him to the, important to improve, uh, to, to prove that he was important to us, to, to work something out. And that, that's something that, that went on for, for quite some time, and I, and as far as I know, a belief is, is satisfaction. So it, it is something that we continue to do, and I think that our history has proven that, that we've done it specifically with him.
To the discussion around the grocer, the supermarket, I was looking through the fiscal impact study that you all had provided, um, either produced by, by your office at Atlantic Realty or a third party, and I noticed that, um, there was some discussion in there related to sales per square foot that mentioned sprout, uh, and referenced sprouts eight K and ten K. Uh, is, is that the type of tenant, uh, type of grocer tenant that you all are pursuing, or was that just used purely for demonstrative purposes when, uh, putting together that fiscal impact study?
I believe that was purely for demonstrative purposes.
Okay. All right. Um, and then speaking to that fiscal impact study, I want to take a look, um, and, and this really speaks to, um, the, the quality of the project, the, the expectation of the quality of the project, uh, as interpreted by the community, uh, and those of us here deliberating on this, um, this particular development. I'm looking at the rental rates, um, that, that are listed here in that fiscal impact study, and I'm looking at rental rates, and I understand you blanked out the supermarket and the restaurant because of those, those commitments, uh, aren't firm yet, um, but the other retail rental rate of around thirty-three, thirty-four dollars a square foot that's extrapolated over, um, but over that, uh, ten-year period, and then the office rental rate of thirty dollars per square foot. Those, from my standpoint, for the project that's been described here that Mr. Painter has laid out, um, and I think at least from the renderings, those, those rates seem somewhat low, uh, to me. Can, can you kind of, can you give me, because I, I've seen rates in, in second, third generation space and buildings that have already been constructed that have rates higher than that. So can you give me some, some understanding and explanation around, you know, the economics of those rents and, and why we wouldn't expect for them to be much higher, uh, if this is a, a much higher quality build and added square footage, or it's possible I am, I am also missing something here?
Well, uh, no, believe me, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to shy away from, uh, higher rates here by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, but at the same time, we have owned George Mason Square, one fifty South Washington, for quite some time, and are aware of the challenges that we've had over that timeframe of leasing that project up, and, um, and we're just trying to be realistic on what we knew we could anticipate as, as far as rental rates go, uh, here. Would I, be surprised if rental rates didn't increase? Um, no, I'm very, very hopeful and not mystic, but especially coming out of the situation that we've just gone through, especially with our knowledge that we have on the buildings that we own in Falls Church, um, I, I think that that is a reasonable approach, and that's what we were trying to show here.
Okay. And not to get too granular on this, um, Adam, but are those, are those triple net rates? So if I'm, if I'm on my mind thinking about a deal that's being done on brand new retail or brand new office space, and you're telling me it's thirty-four dollars a square foot for, for the retail, uh, and thirty dollars for office, is that triple net or?
Well, for the retail space, not for the office.
Okay. Okay. And what are the, well, I won't, I won't ask that question because I don't want you to have to dive into those details about the existing George Mason. Um, but it, it does speak to, to the concern that I have, um, primarily, which is related to the existing office, and I know that others here on council have expressed those, um, concerns about a reskining, a repositioning. And as I've, I've looked at the materials in preparation for tonight, you know, I continue to have a concern that although those existing office buildings are not part of this development, uh, it is impossible, uh, to, it is impossible to look at them as anything other than inextricably linked with this redevelopment. Uh, and, and it, it just strikes me as a massively missed opportunity, uh, not to renovate, rebuild even, uh, certainly at a minimum, reskin those buildings, because I, I envision this project and think about those buildings sitting in the center of this and how they will stick out like a sore thumb, driving down Washington towards Broad and seeing buildings that frankly are constructed architecturally in a vastly different area, wrapped in buildings that are a hundred and fifteen feet tall on all sides, towering over these buildings that, um, smaller windows, brick facade. I understand you're going to do some, some aesthetic work to the bottom of that, but it just seems like a hugely missed opportunity and an opportunity frankly that I think would lead to, to overall higher quality space, uh, and would be a draw for higher quality tenants to get us over, you know, rental rates, um, you know, above thirty-four dollars a square foot for retail and above thirty dollars a square foot for office. And so I'm just trying to think about this in the context of our, of one of our, our most prominent, large contiguous, uh, pieces of land, um, there at a very, very important corner for commercial activity. And, and, you know, for, for me to, to not see that as part of this project, I think, is very disappointing. Um, and, and again, I know that you're looking at that and I don't expect an answer or a complete reboot on architectural renderings at this point, but I, I just want to, to draw attention to the fact that I think that that is critically important, and even though part of a, another entity mechanically is something that I think should be included for this project to be as successful as you all have envisioned, uh, and, and explained today. So I would ask that you look at that. Um, I will, I will second many of the comments that have been laid out in detail by other council members tonight. I think that they've hit on a lot of the concerns that have been raised in, in previous meetings. And again, I would ask you to look at some of those, uh, concerns that, that I have raised related to the office piece, uh, and I think that you've, you've, you've certainly, I think, exhausted our conversation. We have exhausted our conversation on the businesses and will, um, assume and hope that you continue that conversation, uh, to support those businesses in every way that you can. Uh, but again, would ask that you please look at that central component to a very important commercial project and rethink, uh, how those office buildings are included so we don't have this fortress effect of brand new, uh, commercial buildings wrapped around, um, a, a decades-old office building that, that looks completely out of place, uh, in a larger project like that at a very important corner, uh, to the city. So thank you all for your time, um, and, and presentation.
All right. Other comments from other folks? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Uh, I have a couple of questions, and one might take a while. I apologize to do this at ten oh four P. M. Um, the first one is related to the walkthrough of the project. I learned a lot about this project on that walkthrough. I've heard from several people in the community, tenants and, uh, neighbors who wish that they had also been invited on that walkthrough, and I'm wondering, Mr. Painter, Mr. Schulman, can you do a reprise of that? Because I think there are people who have a lot of questions, and that would be a helpful way to reach out to the community.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Connolly, we'd be happy to. And we also recorded it and provided the recording of it to Ms. Ruzi, and she posted it on the project's website for anyone that wishes to view it. But it presumably would be the same presentation, but happy to do it again.
We're not aware of it. That would be quite helpful for people to know exactly what's going on and what's coming up next, because there's nothing like standing in the middle of it. Uh, all right. So my second question relates to the twenty thirteen agreement to convey the property where Matt's Taylors to the applicant, and I wasn't here at that point. I think Mr. Snyder, Mr. Tartar, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Shields, and Mr. Schulman were part of, and Ms. Mester, were part of that. And can somebody walk me through what this is, what this means? We're vacating a deed. We've not done this before on another property. I wasn't, I confess, I didn't understand, I was reading through it, didn't understand all of this, so I have a bunch of questions.
Um, so I'll, um, sort of provide some context, and so at the time of, of the twenty thirteen agreement, uh, we were in a mode of, um, unwinding the City Center South project, which had, um, uh, you know, was approved, um, and then immediately had, uh, the, uh, the Great Recession, and, uh, there was a, a whole series of real estate transactions that were associated with that project between the city and between Atlantic Realty Companies. Um, and as part of the settlement of, of those disagreements, uh, the city also wanted to, um, uh, have the, uh, what was then the Mailboxes property, now the Matt's Taylor property, which the city had acquired, uh, for road and transportation purposes, uh, wanted to convey that back to Atlantic and wanted to do so in the context of, uh, providing incentive for the redevelopment of the larger site. Um, and so, uh, some of the things the city bargained for was, uh, public parking, which Atlantic agreed to and which has, uh, honored, uh, uh, since that agreement in twenty thirteen. Um, the city also offered the, the Mailboxes property at a below-market price, um, as part of an economic development incentive package. Um, and as the council is aware, uh, there was a timeframe associated with that of seven years to submit a site plan for redevelopment. At the time in twenty thirteen that that agreement was reached, there was no site plan really conceived of. We wanted to have adequate time so that one could be, um, uh, you know, developed and, and thought through, uh, but that did not happen, uh, within that seven-year timeframe. And so Atlantic Realty paid a second payment to the city of three hundred thousand dollars for that Mailboxes property. Um, there is an existing, uh, covenant on the Mailboxes property, which, uh, relates back to the agreements of that time, that the redevelopment of that property would be of a commercial nature, um, and not of a residential commen, uh, nature. And that's with respect to the relatively small Mailboxes property, um, uh, directly, um, in terms of the surviving aspect of that after that seven-year period, um, expired. So the warranty would, um, would lift that covenant on, on the property of, of residential only, I'm sorry, commercial only for that, uh, property which is related to the Matt's Taylor property today. Um, Ms. McCoskeri has inherited this agreement and has, um, has read through it closely. I'm just providing a bit of the historical context for, uh, some of the things we're trying to accomplish at that time.
So I think you can just, you can really look at it as what the city would be doing would be agreeing to remove the restrictive covenant, which requires only commercial uses on a portion of the property. And so that, that is what the, uh, second item is. It's being included here so that as we get down the road further, it's already had some public exposure, because that'll be part of what has to be done in order to approve the special exception.
So that's not what we're deciding tonight? That's a future decision?
That's correct. That, that will come before you. I, it's being moved along with this item because it's necessary if we don't remove that restrictive covenant sometime in the future, prior to the special exception moving forward, this project couldn't be built. So we've, we wanted to make sure that it got to go along with this matter, but you will not be acting on that item tonight at all. That'll come when the matter comes back to you. Uh, we will have an amendment to that deed. I'll work with Mr. Painter to get that, uh, in place, something both parties would agree upon at that time.
So how much has Atlantic paid the city for that property thus far?
Um, I would need to go back into the records to check. We did have this, we received the, the second payment of three hundred thousand dollars about two years ago, um, and I will need to go back in the record in terms of what the first payment was.
I think somewhere I saw two hundred and thirty-five thousand was the first. So that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd have to, I, I apologize. I'd have to go back and look at, add up the numbers, but the full amount has been paid at this time because the amount would have been reduced had they gone forward within five years for a development plan that met the conditions, and they didn't do that. So they paid the remaining amount, and now they own the property, but it has this restrictive covenant on it.
And then the other thing that was in that twenty thirteen agreement was the land abutting Burke and Herbert Bank would be sold or given to the EDA. Has that occurred?
So, so that land is, um, is currently owned by the city, and it's basically just old, uh, essentially old rights of way that, uh, in order to facilitate the City Center South project was conveyed to Atlantic, so that was conveyed back to the city.
Okay. So that came back to the city. So all the, the things that were written in that original deed have been handled, and all we're being asked to do is say, yes, you can put mixed use on this despite the fact that the original agreement was to only do commercial?
That's correct.
And there's no financial offer to us to change that, right? Or that's just part of this whole special exception?
Um, there's currently nothing on the table, um, at the present time.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Other comments? Does anyone else have any other comments? I suspect someone does, but I think wants to go next. Who wants to go next here? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. No one else seems ready to go, so I will perform my usual function of filling in the space until others are ready to talk. Um, that's right. First thing I, I just want to get some grasp of is the personality of the retail plan for this building. You know, there's destination retail and there's neighborhood serving retail, and I frankly don't care which one you pick. Uh, we could use both. Um, the difficulty that I'm having is that, you know, the drawings suggest and even indicate grocer, and so it's going to be a grocery. That's sort of a destination. People come from outside the city, many of them, to patronize our groceries, which is great. Uh, that to me suggests that we need more, uh, parking, relatively more, not more than you've provided for, but, you know, adequate parking for out-of-town guests to come and patronize the anchor store. If it's not that, if it's neighborhood serving retail, if it's, you know, let's say your vision that you came to us with is lots of little small businesses, we're sort of a incubator for small mom-and-pop businesses at this location, that would have appeal and probably would require less parking, a smaller garage. So all this is by way of asking, you know, the gold standard is a signed lease with an anchor tenant, grocer or whatever. Uh, you know, silver is a, a letter of intent from said tenant. Bronze is, you know, a promise that, uh, we're going to have one, but we can't tell you who it is. Um, we're not really meeting any of those standards here just yet, and, and I'm wondering, uh, as you know, we've had experience in opening other buildings that residential has no trouble filling up, and that's great because you make money and we make money out of residential. But the community very much wants the ground floors to be occupied too. What levers would you suggest we put into this agreement to ensure that the ground floor use, whatever it is, neighborhood or destination, is delivered, uh, at approximately the same time as the residential uses?
Mr. Roundhouse, that's a question for the applicant or staff?
That's for the applicant, Andrew or Adam, either one. That's for the applicant, Andrew or Adam, either one.
So, yeah, so we've got 66,000 approximately square feet of retail and restaurant uses throughout the site, and then above that is about 43,000 square feet of flex office commercial uses. The area, the 26,500 square feet that's right at the corner, you know, it's separated off by itself, it naturally lends itself to a single tenant. It has to be constructed before any of the residential will be constructed above it, that's for sure. Adam, I don't know if you want to speak to, I mean, we're talking about levers being pulled and stuff, but that's, you know, could this be destination retail? Could it be locally-serving retail? Could be a hodge, you know, a mix of it, a hodgepodge of it, just depending on where things are going. I will say that our voluntary concessions do have a list of prohibited uses, certain square footage limitations on the first level, to get the type of retail uses that we're looking for, or that the city has traditionally looked for with all of its projects. The only thing that's maybe different here is that there's not a signed lease or an LOI with a tenant here. And again, we're purposely not doing that only because, you know, we don't want to overpromise and underperform, and we also don't want to be boxed in in case everything goes haywire, in terms of needing to be able to fill the space. Adam?
Andrew, I really don't have anything else to add. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm without further comment, but I really don't think I have further comment after following what you just said.
Address that concern. Just a couple of other things that I noted in turning through the pages. The garage as designed is not like anything that I think we've done before. The garage at Founder's Row is, much of it is above-ground, but, I mean, there is above-ground garage parking at Founder's Row One, but there's a lot of underground, too. I guess in terms of getting some better idea of what we're getting into, it would be helpful to see examples of other buildings, either in your portfolio or elsewhere, that are going to, that in real life, look like, something like what it is that you're proposing to build here. The drawings that you have on, I guess it has a page number, but I see the drawings that you're offering, the one through six drawings. But it would be helpful, I think, to be able to go drive and kick the tires of some building that has a nine-story garage, which is essentially wrapped by residential. And as I look at your drawings, it appears that the residential units, in no case, actually look out over the garage or into the garage, but all of them are oriented with windows or balconies or both, away from the garage, either into the courtyard or to the exterior of the building. Is that from a design sense? Do I have that roughly right?
I would have to refer to the architect, Thomas, but I believe that is correct. Is that right, Thomas?
Yes, that is correct. No units overlook into the garage.
The other thing that jumped out at me is, I'm flipping through the pages, is the written dialogue between our fire marshal and the applicant. I would just, again, it's the first time I think we've had a building of this height, except up at West Falls, which is, you know, purpose-designed for access to the buildings that are going to go up there. This is sort of fitting buildings into an existing space. And I couldn't quite read between the lines, but it seemed that one question related to access and stairwells, fire stairwells, and it appeared that because the building is six feet short of the height required to install stairwells, we're not going to have those. And that just, I wondered, I'd like to learn more about that. I want to obviously make sure that fire safety is paramount here. And if a building is within six feet of reaching the level where some extra level of security would be needed, I would like to see us err on the side of safety, if that's possible. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you very much, Congressman. I have to defer to either a civil engineer or architect. That comment was made during our first comment response, I believe. And the way it was resolved was actually the reading of the construction code. It does allow a fire service access elevator required when an occupied floor is more than 120 feet above the lowest level of fire department access. And in this case, a fire service access elevator was not deemed to be required. And this goes to the stairwell issue, I think, that you had raised. And we had made that clarification with our, I believe with our second submission, if I've got that comment correct, with our, yeah, we addressed that in our second submission.
Area that I want to make sure that we are, you know, have buckles and suspenders and belts also. Okay, two other things, and then others can speak. EV charging. Given the news today about Tesla and 100,000 cars being bought by herds and so forth, I just have a vague sense of unease that the buildings that we are talking about today are not going to be future-proofed if we don't at least understand more about how more charging stations are going to be provided in them. And I'm not saying that we need to put them all in tomorrow, or even three years from now when this building opens, but I'd like to understand more about, okay, we have an increased percentage of stations that you provided, and conduit for a number above that, but what expense or what structural work is going to be involved if, if it turns out, you know, 15 years from now, and this building will still be relatively young, you know, 75, 80, 90% of the people in the world are driving electric cars. Obviously, the EV stations that we're putting in now are not going to be sufficient to meet that need. Maybe there'll be some other technology that recharges your battery. I don't know, as you drive along the road, it'll automatically recharge. Anyway, I would like our intelligent, environmentally-oriented folks to weigh in on that, and engineers to speak to that, if they're thinking now about, you know, what a building is going to behave like in 15 years. Finally, the conference use, the conference center that you referred to, and the chamber and so forth. You know, our chamber punches above its weight. It does not really have the staff to manage a conference facility, or a visitor's center, or anything like that. If they are a candidate to be included in the office space in this building, would that conference center that's attached to their office space be managed by the staff of Atlantic in terms of scheduling and maintenance, and who fills up the coffee urns and so forth? Is that something that you all have thought about? Is it an amenity that's attached to the apartment building, which will be managed by the Atlantic staff that manages the apartments?
Yeah, Congressman, yeah, we have thought about this. We did not include in our voluntary concession, sort of, community benefit summary those details yet, but it is true that they, you know, it will be managed by the property management staff for the commercial tenants. And that conference center would not only be available for the chamber space at no additional cost, it would not be managed by the chamber staff, it would be managed by the building management. That space would also be used for the existing tenants of George Mason Square, and again, and any new tenants in the building, obviously. And then on a first-come, first-served basis for boards and commissions and other city nonprofits.
I don't want, by not bringing these other matters up that my colleagues have raised, to indicate that I'm also interested in them, but particularly as regards affordable dwelling units, I'm pleased to hear that further conversations have been held, and that others are planned. You know, as we do these new buildings, we devote a lot of time to gathering data on traffic, and what are we going to do to mitigate traffic, and traffic calming, and signals, and so forth, and that's all good and proper. It does concern me that, well, I don't want to say concern, it's an opportunity, when we build new buildings like this, to be aware that we're inviting new people into the city also. And, you know, presumably, some of them are going to be working downstairs in the anchor tenant grocer or whatever, if they can afford to. And if they can't afford to, we're basically building buildings with amenities that residents here, who can afford to live here, can use, but the people who serve them are people who are going to have to live some great distance away in order to get to their jobs. They've got to create environmental impacts, and transportation congestion, and so forth. So, when I look at the affordable housing question, I see a direct line from the people who are going to be working in a building like this, and the other buildings that we're putting up. This is why the, you know, the 12% of 60A MI was such an appealing characteristic of the Founder's Row Two project, for me at least. And I would urge, encourage, further discussions that would enrich the affordable dwelling count here, and recognition that this, if this building goes forward, is going to be a major employer in the city. The accumulated number of folks who work in the businesses there is going to be significant. And I think that creates an obligation for us to try to find homes for a certain percentage of those folks who might not otherwise be able to live in the city. Okay, thank you.
All right, other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. So, I think this project has real potential, but I really don't think we're there yet in terms of some specifics. The biggest issue for me is the lack of definition of commercial in the area, and the very early stage of that. Ordinarily, we've got a much better sense about what the occupancies will be, which makes the financial projections pretty ethereal. So, that's a major point. The second one has already been mentioned by other council members, that the only thing we've heard is, oh yeah, we'll talk about ADUs, but I would want the much higher percentage, and not take an out-of-school, or a library, or parks capital payments that we see in other developments. But I'm not sure that commitment has been made yet, so I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the ADUs before we move forward. I think that there's really been insufficient communication with the neighborhood, which has indicated some interest in the project, some positive interest in the project, but they've really not been adequately brought in at this stage. And so, I think that's an issue for me as well. The protection of existing businesses, nice general commitments, but no specifics, and I'm reluctant to move forward until we've got stronger specifics on the existing businesses. So, I appreciate the overall approach here, and I think there's some good things about this, but there are a lot of questions in my mind, fundamental questions, that I think need to be resolved, frankly, before we go to boards and commissions. So, I'll probably be supporting a motion to defer for some time until we can get some more of these specifics worked out, so we know what it is that we're actually passing on to boards and commissions. Because at this point, all I have are pictures and a residential component, with not much else. A commitment to work with us, which is great, but it doesn't meet the needs for the fundamental project that we're asking boards and commissions to take a look at. Thank you.
All right, other comments? Ms. Hiscott?
Thank you so much, and thank you for this iteration, and for addressing many of the comments that were made at our last work session. And I won't reiterate the concerns of my colleagues. I would echo several of them. I have one question, though, that might help me out in one area, and that's with regard to the parking deck that's at 1.3 spots per unit. Are you amenable to looking at something closer to our utilization rate of one parking spot per unit?
Adam, I don't know if you want to take a stab at that, and I think we're always looking to, you know, everything's open, but I think the one thing that we want to make sure that we do is meet demand, and not be at a disadvantage in terms of leasing out spaces to office tenants, retailers, or residents. But, Adam, I don't know if you want to speak big about it, or ask a question?
I think that's right on point, Andrew, and I think you're saying that. Our goal, the last thing I want to do is build unnecessary excess parking. And we have done our research on determining what we think is the appropriate ratio for our businesses, for our residents, with conjunction with our traffic consultants. And we will certainly continue to look at that. I'm not drawing a line in saying by any means, but I think it's important to say that that's where we came up with these numbers, but it is something that we will certainly continue to look into.
If our utilization data of one per unit was correct, you know, let's just say, if we move forward looking at this, what reduction would that, because obviously, it's not exactly based upon the configuration of a parking deck, you can't necessarily just take 1.3% floors off. If it were one unit, one parking spot per unit, would that be another one, another one floor lower, two floors lower, just for consideration?
That is a question I have to defer to Maria Lashinger, our traffic consultant, as far as what that would look like. I will tell you, and I don't know if you have the answer to that at right now. I will tell you that with our revised parking reduction, by lopping off a floor, we are now seeking a 20%, 20.4% parking reduction, from what the zoning ordinance requires. So, if we were to reduce it further, I don't know what that reduction would look like, and I don't know if that would result in another four being taken off. Maria, maybe you have some answer on that right now? I don't know if we know it, though.
Good evening, Maria Lashinger with Growth Slate. We would have to rerun the model. It's a shared parking model, which takes into account all of the uses on the site, and the various proposed ratios, and the various proposed parking demands per use. So, I agree that it would reduce it to the point of being a full level. I couldn't answer that right this moment, but we're glad to take a look at that.
That would be for multiple reasons. I'd be interested in that. One, just from the environmental impact, from our density impact, and then, of course, the, you know, the expense to build parking. You know, you're not making money off of parking spots, per se, and if there's additional, you know, savings from that, perhaps it could be applied to some of the other areas, you know, that we're talking about, whether that's, you know, housing, or reskining of, you know, making a more cohesive look around that corner on broad and wash, which is one of the concerns that has been expressed to me in a number of different ways, is it's going to be great to have this beautiful building wrapped around it, and we're looking forward to having a lot of the amenities. I personally am supportive of the residential to some extent, but I'm concerned about its look, you know, and Letty's asked a couple of times about what she calls reskining. I guess that's a term of art, that the existing George Mason Square buildings. And I work in the 150 South Washington Building, so I'm very familiar with its advantages and limitations. So I think that's a major area of concern for me, and just looking at ways to shift some of the expenses, some of that could be in parking. I know that would only be a component of it, but those are some areas that I'm still looking for some significant changes in. And then I was, I'm concerned about, you know, when we're talking about the retail and not having, you know, not wanting to overpromise and underdeliver with regard to grocery stores, and listening to my colleagues who were involved in the negotiations for the prior mixed-use buildings that had grocery stores in them, and that had them signed at this point in time, or at least a letter of intent signed at this degree. You know, you mentioned that if things went haywire, we might have to change the hit that we would take on retail. And I kind of, I wrote those terms down, because that definitely made me a little nervous, too, that if you all are concerned about the retail, and if we could fill that in, does it make a difference to our financials? Do we, are we impacted by that? And why would we make a decision without having those things in place? So, that's a little bit of a rambling conversation, I understand, but I'm just trying to figure out how to augment what my colleague said without repeating that. I think that's all I wanted to say for the moment.
And Ms. Hiscott, just to respond to the last comment, the city's fiscal impact analysis, what the city is basing its analysis on, really should be considered conservative, because it is assuming no anchor. It's just assuming straight-line retail, and it's not assuming, it's assuming the, basically the lowest level of retail from a tax revenue perspective, not necessarily a land use perspective, and whether it's a quality retail tenant, but, but just from a, say, a meals tax perspective, or a cigarette tax perspective, or, you know, it's assuming just the straight baseline. So it can only go up, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, if that makes sense.
I've got a few comments, if I may. First is a question, so the building, as I understand, is 115 feet. Is that correct, in its height?
I believe that's correct.
And so, that's based on an average site elevation, which, I know the land slopes pretty well. What's the grade change from Route 7 or Lee's What's the grade change from Route 7 or Leesburg Pike or Broad Street down to the backside about?
Thomas, do you have that by any chance?
Roughly?
It's about 12 feet.
12? So is, how is, how tall is the building actually from grade on Broad Street? Do you know? Like, in other words, is it actually, because of the site, the grade change, and that's part of your calculation, right, for the site, is it actually more like 125 feet, let's say, on Broad Street, out of the ground?
I would have to get back to you.
Because you're using the average site elevation, right, on points all around the site, up with your...
That is correct.
And so that's going to take into account land downhill, and then you're going to use that as an average, and then that's going to determine how tall, quote, "this building" will be based on an average. So I guess I would like to know at some point how tall out of the ground the 115-foot building is. My guess is it's more like 120, maybe 122, something like that. But that's starting to get up there as far as height goes for Falls Church. So I'd be interested in knowing what the absolute height is based on finished grade on Broad Street. It doesn't have to be this moment, but at some point in time.
Sure. We'll get that for you.
Thank you. Secondly, I am interested in the commitment for a grocery store. I imagine you all have been down to Founder's Row One and seen essentially a nearly empty ground floor there, in its entirety, essentially, and I'm not interested in repeating that. And so personally, I would like to see a commitment, as we've done in other grocery store uses, for some kind of commitment requiring the grocery store. And so I guess I would just ask you to give some consideration of that. I do continue to feel that the garage is too high, frankly, for everyone's good, including your own. I just don't see people driving up eight stories to park. I think it's going to be a real challenge, and my hunch is, over time, if not from day one, it's going to be excessive and not get well utilized. And so I would ask you to continue to look at options and ways that you can maximize efficiency in the garage. To that end, I think one of your consultants already mentioned that you are sharing office and residential spaces. Is that correct?
That is correct, Maria.
That is correct.
So how many residential parking spaces, quote, are you having? In other words, how many units do you have?
246 units.
And at 1.3, that's, what is that, like 320 or something like that, quote, for residential uses, about?
In the shared parking model, we currently have residential parking at 1.0 per dwelling unit.
Oh, so it's not 1.3? We were all up here on the diet.
1.3 is the blended rate when you take into account all uses on site.
And how about your office use? What is your, what is your rate for office, then? One space per, how many square feet?
2.4 spaces per 1,000 square feet.
Okay. So that's, like, my math is terrible. One for 400 or so, is that right? But is that, but are those, are those basically, they're shared, so when someone drives away from their office at 5:00, the residential tenant can come in? Or is it more reserved? This is the residential thing, there's a bar here, it's coming up and down, office people stay out of there? How, because it seems to me there ought to be massive efficiencies in your garage, given that half the people are using it during the day and the other half are using it at night. Am I missing something? It just seems like it's overparked, given the efficiencies you should be able to achieve?
It's the latter. It is the utilization ratios over the course of, over the course of the day, right, when residents are heading out to work in the morning, office users are coming in and vice versa in the evening. So it is that. When you combine that in the evening with retail, there is a greater peak that occurs, not just during the day, but it is again in the evening, there's another peak. So whenever everyone is home and their residence is, the retail parkers are there as well. So there is that secondary peak. So as far as efficiencies are concerned, the current parking supply that we're proposing is in line with the expected demand based on these ratios we're proposing here.
But just, eight stories, as I've said, just seems really tall. And just for everyone's interest, I think it'd be great to find a way to get off of that. But, and I think the garage is just too tall. And so, anyway, this is maybe not be your issue, but I'm just going to raise it against the staffs here as well. I think the traffic circle needs some additional thought. I think circles in urban areas where people aren't used to them, I think, has its challenges. And so that may be something you're just totally agnostic to, is how the circle works, and if so, so be it. But I guess as to staff, I would certainly ask you to give some additional consideration. And I presume you all have a traffic consult... Oh, Grove Slade, right there. Have you guys looked at this circle at all in terms of function and have any thoughts on it?
In the traffic study, we did analyze both the roundabout and the traffic signal option. Functionality, operationally, they're fairly similar. The results expected. It is a city project, so we would defer to them.
Is it a circle or a signalized intersection?
It is relatively the same. They both have their pros and cons. They both have some challenges and, but, you know, I think it's a driver expectation definitely changes over time as it relates to the roundabout. There is some education component that goes with that, but over time, it is an efficient intersection treatment.
Park that I've mentioned before, and it sounds like you guys have had some interaction with city staff on that, but I'd like to make sure this park is utilized and, you know, we have limited park space in the city, and just sort of having a space that's, has busy traffic around it that people don't want to get over to or don't have a purpose in going there is something I'd like to avoid. So maybe this is directed more to city staff than it is to developer, but I think we really need to give some thought as to how that's best utilized. I love the idea of providing additional open space, and I thank you for that, but I think it does need some additional thought. So a few other ideas here. I would like to see strong retail. I know there was mention earlier about, you know, any retail's okay or neighborhood retail's okay. I mean, to my mind, on a prominent street like this, we ought to be able to attract, with a million cars going through this intersection every month, I think some high-quality retail. There are other secondary locations, which may not either have the visibility or the potential to attract strong retail. I don't think your site is one of those. Again, with the kind of traffic that grows, goes through Washington and Broad, a million cars on a monthly basis, I think we ought to be able to attract a grocer and retain one. So I would continue to ask you to look towards that end. With respect to your current tenants and the issues they might see in the future, are you going to provide continual parking for them, or is there going to be a period of time where you're demoing things and you haven't phased things in, and so there is no parking for your current retail tenants?
Just to, so we did submit an interim parking plan, which talks about the demolition of the garage, the establishment of a temporary parking lot. There is no point in time, correct me if I'm wrong about this, Adam, but there will be no point in time during construction where any of the tenants would not have the same number of spaces that we are required to honor in their leases, plus the standard visitor spaces that you typically have.
That's correct.
They will be provided onsite. There will be a large temporary parking lot constructed where the Matt's Tailoring Building is and where the BB&amp;T Building is, going back toward, to where the new parking garage essentially would be. And that would be one large surface lot. And then there would be, that would allow us to demo the existing garage, construct the garage, then once the garage is up and running, get rid of the parking lot, move the, move the parking into the new garage, and then construct the first three levels of the building in concrete, and then north of that, and probably in metal for the residential. Right, yeah. I think there's a couple more phases than that, the way we, the way we, yes. That's right.
So again, I think also this notion of removing the restrictive covenant as well and what kind of value, that's a conversation I think we need to continue to have. And so I've just put that on the table as well, as removing this restrictive covenant. I know creates value for you. It wasn't contemplated at the time of the original conveyance and the price for that. So I guess I would just put that on, on the side, stick a pin in that one for maybe later conversation. But I do appreciate the changes you have made, and I think there are a lot of things that are very attractive about this proposal, so I don't want my comments to leave you with another impression. Let's see, do anyone else have any additional comments or questions or statements they'd like to make? I want to ask the public, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think in listening to all the discussion and listening to the positive approach the developer has taken, but I think a couple of these things need to be worked out in more detail than they, than they are right now. I'd like to move to defer Resolution TR-21-09 to our first meeting in December. And TR-21-37, I guess you really need to do separate motions, right? So the main, the main, the main special exception is TR-21-09.
Yeah. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Okay.
Our first meeting in December. Full, full meeting, to bring it back and a work session in advance, if possible. Yeah. Yeah.
December what day?
13th.
13th. Is that our first and last meeting in December? Okay. And would the notion be there would be a work session prior to that?
Yeah.
All right, so a work session prior, can we fit that in, Mr. Shields?
Yes, we would fit it in.
Okay. On both, on both days, either the time in November for work session?
Yeah, the work session would need to be in November. The 6th is, that work session is a joint session with the school board. So we would need to have a work session in November.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have conversation, discussion, comments?
So just, if I could, just to be clear, the work session date would be probably November 22nd, because we're not going to meet on the 29th?
I believe the, the work session date would be the 15th.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. All right. Do we have conversation, comments about deferral?
I had a question or comment.
All right, go ahead.
Did I hear the work session was November 15th? Is that the plan?
Well, that was a very full agenda for budget matters.
My concern's actually more, I heard a lot of substantial comments. Well, we're seeing improvement, but I just want to make sure that two weeks feels like enough time to actually make progress on all the things we talked about.
Well, let's ask the developer that. I think that would be, it's really in their court. As you may have just heard, hopefully you've just heard, there's some discussion about deferring this case for two weeks with the idea that you would attempt to respond to the comments you've heard either today or at other times or even other venues. Is that enough time for you to address what you've heard tonight, Mr. Painter?
Well, we give it our best effort. Adam, what do you think?
I think that's what we'll do.
All right. All right, so we've heard from the developer, they think they can address it and at least come back to us and see what they can do. And I guess that's three weeks from now. All right, other comments from anyone? We have a motion on the table. I guess it just says to the first item, but why don't we just go ahead and do that, and we'll go proceed depending on the outcome of that. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
Pass.
Ms. Hardy?
We just, we clarify, is this a motion to defer?
Defer TR-21-09 to the first meeting in December.
So you do not want to, okay. So voting, voting yes is to defer?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So should I go on?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shont Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes. Madam Clerk? I vote yes.
And I just want to be clear as well that we are setting this for three weeks from now, and our hope and expectation is in this coming weeks, the next three weeks, we can make some real progress on this and hopefully be in a position to advance this case further. But I think it's dependent on the applicant as well as staff to work together to try to address what you've heard today. But we look forward to further improvement in this project. So I think the vote's had. Thank you for coming out this evening. I propose we take a five-minute recess and just kind of gather ourselves and use restaurants that we need to, and then carry on. We do have two more items. We're going to do those, then we're going to take a short break.
Do you want to take care of the second resolutions?
Yes, the second and third, and then we'll go ahead and take a short break.
And that was a six to one?
Yes. Mr. Snyder?
I move to defer TR-21-37 to the, our first meeting in December with a work session on November 15.
We have a second on that motion?
Second.
I'm sorry I missed that. I couldn't tell the voice with a mask.
That was Hardy.
Okay, thank you.
Would you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, this time.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shont Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, Council.
Third, next motion? One more? Is there one more? Or we don't need it?
No, I think we're just on to consent.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, if we only have consent items, do you want to just move to a adjournment? Does anybody have anything else?
If we get through, well, if we get through that and comments in 10 minutes, yes. But I mean, we're almost three and a half hours in a meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
So if we can get through that, sometimes we can't, it seems like. So, yeah, let's go ahead and if we can plow through it with that understanding, we won't take a break.
Well, let me help with this. Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of all the items on the consent calendar.
I second.
All right. Any comment? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shont Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's keep moving. Any business not on the agenda, standing, regional committee reports, council member comments? Anyway?
There's a government operations committee meeting tomorrow at noon time.
All right. What else do we have? Anything else anyone would like to say before we adjourn?
We have to adjourn.
All right, let's do it. We are adjourned.